Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Regular Board Meeting, Board of Education Regular Meeting. This meeting is, in the past, our meetings have been in a virtual mode. We have a full room of families and children and artists, as well as parents here tonight, this evening. So, thank you all for being here this evening. We truly appreciate your presence. So first, I'd like to go with determining whether we are in compliance with the open meeting law notification.
Yes, dear.
Alright, thank you. Please call the roll.
Herzog.
Here.
Burns.
Here.
Pejel.
Here.
Solaji.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
Carlin.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. So, this evening is kind of a first, again, in the sense of that we haven't been able to do what we're about to do with it being student-led for almost about two years. And that is the Pledge of Allegiance. And so, I would like to invite Mr. Aidan Lecker to come up and to stand right over here. And I would like to invite everyone in the room to stand up as well and to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Mr. Lecker, whenever you're ready, you can go ahead and start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Aidan?
Thanks for coming on and giving us the Pledge of Allegiance today. That's what she has to hear. Thank you.
Dr. Davis, for a good part of the last year, has been leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And it's been great to have the ability to have a student to continue that tradition as we have. So, thank you for leading us the last year, and we are looking forward to students leading us in the future. Alright, next is art recognition. This is an opportunity where we get to recognize our artists of the Oshkosh Area School District, and specifically, the west side of the school district. And so, the way that this will go today is that Dr. Kim Brown will read the name of the artist. Their artwork will be displayed on the screen. If they would come up, if they are present in the room, and they will receive a certificate of their artwork from Dr. Davis and I, and a picture as well. And then, that thank you of a picture will be sent as a follow-up later on during the week, next week. So, Kim, go ahead.
Okay, can we have Brandy Rut? I love Brandy's photo. Ashlyn Groda. Audrey Keen. Alicia Bailey. Natalie Trapp. Anna Timke. Leighton Lloyd. Olive Hobbsley. Ava Shetl. Delaney Smith. Anna Schleis. Lydia Hill. Adeline Herr. Aubrey Epprecht. Leila Becker. Ethan Ziegler. Riley Lecker. Hibba Malik. Haley Peck. Clayton and Holzer. Michael Olson.
Thank you, Kim.
Alright, can we get a round of applause for all of our members?
Now, we know that you all really want to stay here the rest of the night while you're meeting. But if you don't, you can go ahead and go about what you need to do this evening. We'll give you a couple minutes to clear the room and to get where you need to be. Oh, yes, one other thing, too, is that everyone's art that we called off, names that we called off today, that artwork is displayed, is going to be displayed in the district, this district building for the next year. So, go ahead and tell family members and people in the community that as well. But as you go and walk out, if you haven't taken a look at that artwork, go right ahead to do that. And if you've looked at it already, go ahead and do it again. So, thank you. We enjoy all of our students being great artists and great students. Thank you. We are going to go back into the regular meeting here and work to the approval of the agenda. Is there any elements of tonight's agenda that we would like to amend or adjust their placement in the agenda? No? Earlier, you talked, Ms. Carlin, you asked about...
Pulling number nine to discuss.
Pulling number nine?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, so, is there any other requests to move anything or to pull any agenda items? Okay. So then, we will seek approval of the full agenda. Give me a second here. So, we will be moving consent resolution, Agenda Number Nine, to the individually considered resolutions. Okay? So, we approve the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda with that change.
Oh.
Some moved.
Alright, so moved?
Second.
Moved by Carlin, seconded by Wright. So, thank you. Alright, next up, we are going to move on to the Board and Administrative Reports. I'm going to start with my report and the...
Do we need a vote on that?
Oh, we do. Thank you. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. So, please call the roll on approving the agenda as amended.
Burns.
Aye.
Pejel.
Aye.
Solaji.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I think the full room kind of got me off on my shoulders a little bit. Alright, so, moving on to Board and Administrative Reports, starting with my report. We recently made a change to the how we recognized those that were retiring from the district, and we wanted to recognize them in a more kind of formal way, other than just, you know, a motion and a second and an approval of that. And so, we thought it would be good to move them to being read and recognized in the President's Report.
I believe, Mr. Pejel, we also wanted to do this earlier in the meeting, so if someone who was retiring wanted to attend the meeting but didn't want to attend for the whole meeting, they could hear some positive things about their tenure in the district and not have to sit for some length of time.
Sure. So, what my intention today is, I'm going to say the name of the employee and the years of service. After I've write everyone's name and their years of service, if anyone on the Board knows or wants to take an extra moment to recognize that person, they are welcome to do that. Alright? Alright, so next up, first up is Maggie Peggy Buss. She has been with the, in the district for 12 years. She served, lastly, at Shapiro STEM Academy. Next is Matthew Jeffers, who served at Merrill Middle School for 27 years, or served the district for 27 years. Susan Greeninger, who, lastly, served at South Park Middle School and served the district for 24 years. Is that right? Yes. I'm going to take off the glasses. Next up is Ronald Hayes. He served, I'm sorry, Sue Greeninger served the district, in a district-wide position. Ronald Hayes served South Park Middle School and served the district for 29 years. Kay Honish, lastly, worked at Oaklawn and Reed Elementary Schools, and I got to do math. Sorry, hold on. I missed someone. Twenty, 25 years. Twenty, sorry, 29 years. Sorry, I'm caught up here, so... Yep, 29 years. Julie Murphy, served, last served Lakeside Elementary School and has spent three years with the Oshkosh Area School District. Janet Ruttig, served, lastly, served Franklin Elementary, Shapiro STEM Academy, and Perry Tippler Middle School, and has also been with us for five years. Kathy Spiegel has been with the Central Administration and has been with us for 27 years. Kathy Urbus, lastly, served the Oaklawn Elementary School and has been with us for 31 years. Joanne Wetterow has been at Emmeline Cook and has been with us for 26 years. So, first, you know, thank you for your years of service, for improving the lives of children and having an impact on our schools through your activities and experience that you brought to our schools. So, for all of you that, for your commitment. So, is there anyone else that would like, anyone else from the Board that would like to say anything else? Go ahead, Dr. Herzog.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Pejel. In my previous role as a Central Office Administrator, I had the good fortune of working with many of these teachers over the years, and I always relished the opportunity to visit their classrooms because they were so positive and upbeat, put children first, and they will be missed. They will truly be missed. I know we will, we will find more teachers to come into our classrooms, but these, these are all special individuals who have devoted their, much of their life work to serving the students and families of our district. So, Matt Jeffers, Suzie Greeninger, who also had been a teacher at Lakeside Elementary, Lake, yeah, Lakeside Elementary. Ron Hayes at South Park, he always participated in various activities with students and staff, opening day when they would have these competitions, that was fun to watch. And Kay Honish, in her reading recovery role. Katie Urbus, as a teacher, most recently at Oaklawn. And Kathy Spiegel, we're losing another great support staff person, an office technical from Central Office. We already lost one in the Special Ed Department. So, I just want to wish all these people the best because you've worked hard, you've served our district well, and we wish you the best in retirement. May it be long, healthy, and happy. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other element I've ever... Thank you. Dr. Davis, if you'd like to lead us in your Superintendent's Report.
Yes, Superintendent's Good News Report for tonight. First of all, over at Jefferson Elementary, we had Jefferson Elementary students recently started a deputy recess club. Students committed to being a playground deputy by making important promises, including pledging to keep the school community clean, helping students find friends to play with, and working to solve disagreements. Officer Mann from the Oshkosh Police Department even stopped by with some goodie bags to thank the young deputies for all of their work. So, great work over at Jefferson. Hannah Chung, a junior at Oshkosh West, just received the Wisconsin National Center of Women and Information Technology Award for Aspirations in Computing. Award recipients were selected from nearly 4,000 applicants nationwide, recognizing outstanding aptitude and aspirations in technology and computing. Hannah first found her passion for STEM at age nine, when she joined the first LEGO League team. She continues to learn more about coding and leads our Wave Robotics Program as a co-team leader. In the future, Hannah hopes to become an influential person who will revolutionize the world by inventing innovative green technologies. So, my guess is that's not the last time we'll hear from Hannah. So, great work, Hannah, congratulations. Thirty students from South Park, Perry Tippler, and Carl Traeger Middle Schools recently attended the tech-savvy-at-UWO Fox Cities Campus. The all-day event introduced students to careers in science, technology, engineering, and math, and provided them empowering and motivational lessons. Our high school science teachers recently facilitated experiments for our middle school science teachers in an effort to model lab experiences that our high school students will have. It's provided a springboard for discussion on the science and engineering practices used in our high school and how our middle school teachers can help prepare students to be successful as they move up. So, great work for our staff in that collaboration. Reed Elementary recently celebrated a level of learning event with families. Nearly 250 family members joined together for dinner and a variety of fun and educational activities, including reading, writing, math games, robots, cookie decorating, and family photographs. This past weekend, we enjoyed celebrating an OASD night at the Wisconsin HERD game. Thanks to the support from the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation, a portion of the ticket sales benefited our own education foundation. Plus, thanks to generous business donors, over 100 students and families were able to go to the game for free. We appreciate all of those who joined us for that great community event, and thank you to the HERD for being great hosts. It's a fun activity. Perry Tippler and Elps recently held a friendly competition to see which grade level could raise the most money to benefit the Oshkosh Day-by-Day Warming Shelter with a goal of $120. School community raised over $500, and the sixth graders came out with the win, raising over $250 on their own as a grade. Students also made and donated fleece-tied tie blankets to complete the donation. So, great work over at Tippler Middle School. The Communities2 program at Oshkosh North recently held the eighth annual Staff Chili Cook-Off. Staff members participated by bringing pots of chili, as well as purchasing tickets to sample and vote on their favorite ones. This year's project was called Mascots and Morale. Almost $900 was raised, which will go towards purchasing a new mascot outfit for the school. And then, on a side note, my chili did not become part of the top five, so it was not an award winner this year, and I'm working hard at my recipe for next year. So, commentary. The entire community is invited to an exciting event we have coming up, the groundbreaking ceremony on Wednesday, April 6th, at 11:00 a.m. for the new Vell Phillips Middle School. We are so grateful for the support of the Oshkosh community and the opportunity to invest in our community and our children. We hope that you are able to join us for this momentous celebration. And finally, just some activities that I've been able to do since the last time we met through spring break, but a lot of community events. Had a really good time spending some time with my peer superintendents, actually, at the Winnebago County Retired Educators Association, talking about current topics. So, I just want to thank them for their hospitality and opportunity to collaborate with the superintendent in Amro and superintendent in Winnie County. So, that was a really, really nice event. And that concludes the Good News Report for tonight.
Under your section is also the Listening Session?
Yes, Board Listening Session. Yeah, so just wanted to just give some points of note from that Listening Session. We had three members of the community that participated in that Listening Session prior to the last meeting. And some of the topics that were talked about, we had some concerns come out about the prior moves to virtual learning, and so, had some discussion about that and thinking about, hopefully, never happen to go back to that point, but I think it's good to do some reflections on how that moved forward. Also, concerns just regarding mask requirements and its effects related specifically to mental health. And so, again, hopefully, we don't have to go back to that point. We're in a mass optional environment, but good to be able to have some reflections from the community along those lines. Some concerns around vaccinations and data collection, validity of that data, so certainly something that we'll, keeping in mind as we're moving forward. And then, concerns just related to transgender students and supports for transgender students. Certainly, we know that, you know, that's a valuable, valuable group within our organization and the supports that are needed. So, it was interesting to hear those perspectives as part of that meeting, but we know that we'll continue to support those students' families as an institution. So, those are the highlights from the Board Listening Session.
Thank you. Dr. Davis. Alright, Board members, this is now an opportunity for any committee chairs to provide reports related to the committees that you serve on. So, who would like to start?
I can go first, just start down on my end. Yeah, so the Policy Committee met on March 9th. We discussed four policies. The first one was the Energy Management Committee, and this discussion, actually, our recommendation is that the Energy Management Committee merge with the Facilities and Finance Committee, which was also something the Facilities and Finance Committee looked at and agreed to. So, some points are being taken from the current policy and placed into the Facilities and Finance policy, and then the vote tonight will be to delete the Energy Management Committee. We also discussed an administrative guideline. We don't typically do that, but we had a request from a community member that we would look at it. So, we did. It's the one about assignment within the district, and Dr. Gunlock spoke about the policy guideline and process and the many steps that are taken when considering student placement. The committee discussed the importance of doing what's best for students. So, while this process is complex, it is a fair process, and we did not recommend any changes. The final change we had tonight that we will, or that we had at the meeting that we'll be voting on tonight, is that there were additional NEOLA updates for the Board Member Behavior and Code of Conduct Policy. The committee recommended that letter "M" be modified to read that we would participate in, I should have had the whole things. The part of the sentence that we changed is that we'd sponsor by the Wisconsin Association of School Boards and an appropriate national association, rather than the NEOLA recommendation specifically listed, the National School Boards Association, and "we," in keeping with the Wisconsin School Board Association, and just with recent movements across the country, wanted to be specific that we would do sponsored activities with an appropriate national association instead of naming a specific one.
That's good. Our next meeting is April 6th. That's it.
You have one? No? Go ahead.
Okay. The Legislative Committee met on March 3rd, and it was attended by myself, Dr. Herzog, Mr. Wright, Dr. Davis, and Drew Niehans. We began with an update from Dr. Davis on the teacher educational programming. He is working on a completion in four years and paid student teaching. Dr. Davis shared information from meetings held with representatives from UW-Oshkosh. Programs discussed included one-by-three program, where students can complete an educational degree earlier by obtaining college credits while in high school, followed by three years in the education program at UW-Oshkosh. This program is operated through the Cooperative Academic Partnership Program, also known as CAP. Moving forward, messaging to students will be important. CAP credits are recognized at any UW system school. In paid student teaching, Dr. Davis is continuing conversations with Ted Nitsky at CISA VI to determine if youth apprenticeship money could be applied to UW teaching experience. Locally, Dr. Davis is also working at other ways to raise funds and attract teachers. It needs to be determined where the funding will come from and if it will continue to be sustainable. Our second topic was about the budget from Mr. Niehans. There's a bill moving through the legislature that is requiring voucher extension, which will remove all enrollment and income caps. Everyone qualifies for fully funded vouchers. the impact for the Oshkosh Area School District would be 9.8 million total voucher tax or $1.54 per $1,000 on a mil rate, but with no benefit to public education. A group in Milwaukee is asking for just under $7 million for public schools and that is a 343 per pupil increase of the revenue limit and to fund special education at 50%, now set to be 30%. Special ed would increase would not raise taxes. We will be talking about this further in our meeting tomorrow morning. And I urge you to look online for the full disclosure of some of those numbers because there's a lot more detail that I'm not summarizing right now for the sake of time. I know we try to keep this short. We also moved on to discuss our current priorities and suggestions for new priorities. Just as a reminder, our three priorities for this committee are mental health, accountability and funding. Regarding mental health, it is one of our goals to provide grant opportunities for innovative methods for schools to provide services to students and staff. And that includes therapy dogs, onsite counselors for drop-in visits. We are still working through logistics of legislation and we don't have a dollar amount yet. $15 million is proposed to be allocated to K-12 and $5 million to higher education. At present, it looks like this is something that would be vetoed. The amount the district receives would be helpful as the Catalpa and Samaritan survey amounts to around $300,000. Regarding accountability, we talked about transportation of the verification process by allowing school districts to validate that students using private voucher funds are within the school district boundaries on an annual basis. The committee wants the voucher information to be included in the next tax bill. This is something that we've talked about many times. Regarding funding, we would have two FTE headcount windows, one in September and October and one in January, February. Dr. Herzog talked about this with Representative Schrah at CISA VI. We have lots of future agenda items. We're going to continue to talk about the voucher clarification process and we are going to determine what the district would want inserted with tax bills to provide a breakdown for the impact of taxpayers. One-page talking point documents are currently being worked on for board and employees and a meeting will be scheduled with Mark Roloff, Nihans and Dr. Davis and other city officials to coordinate this effort and discuss how we get that message to smaller municipalities to include in tax bills. Our next meeting is on tomorrow at 8:30 in the morning and we will be talking about these items that I just summarized and more. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Herzog.
Thank you, Mr. Peschel. I'd like to report on the, excuse me, Facilities and Finance Committee. We met on Thursday, March 17th. Mr. Fox reported that three bids were received and reviewed relative to the furnishings for the new Vell Phillips Middle School. The bids were reviewed and it was decided to go with three different vendors. Marshfield Book and Stationery, Emmons Business Interior and Duette Resource Group for a total of over $1.7 million for the furniture. There will be more detailed information presented tonight and that would be it. We also have a individually considered resolution tonight, so we will be voting on that as a group. Mr. Helmbrook reported on the upcoming mailing to the community regarding the Recreation Department. This booklet had been in print prior to COVID-19 and is now once again in print. He noted there had been a survey done and that roughly 30% of the population who find out about rec department programs do so through the printed activity guidebook. It was also noted that 24% of people who are aware of the programs find out through the district's communication. And yet, about half, 50% of the people who responded to the survey didn't even know that we had a recreation department. So, they're going to be working on their marketing efforts to help inform the community about the prices, locations and variety of programs being offered. Mr. Fox also reported on the North Turf update. He noted that the bid for the North High Schools turf project had gone out last fall. The bid came in at 2.9 million. The project began last fall and the bleachers and lighting were completed over the winter. Weather permitting, the project should continue through mid-April with the completion date of June of 2022. And finally, Mr. Nihans reported that expenses are tracking better than projections. So, we are anticipating at this time or at that time, two weeks ago, that there would be an end-of-year surplus of roughly $3.5 million. The next meeting is scheduled for April 21st at 8:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other reports from any other committee? All right. Thank you. All right, next up, we are going to move on to our non-agenda public forum. I'm going to begin with reading some kind of some ground rules related to that. So, and then after that, I will invite people that have signed up to speak up to the table up in front here. So, when addressing the board, one, please clearly state your name and full address and the topic you wish to address. If you are acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group that you represent. Two, please clearly and concisely, sorry, please state clearly and concisely the matters of concern. Three, please limit your comments to two minutes. Four, please remember that the use of specific names of district personnel, titles and identifiable descriptions may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 920-424-0160 to be directed to the appropriate administrator. Thank you. All right, next, I would like to invite Mr. Wade Foley up to the, up to the table. Thank you for being here, Mr. Foley, and please state your name and your address, please.
My address is 5, 770 St. Ives Road in Oshkosh. This is concerning a busing issue. I'm a resident of Oshkosh and a parent and it has come to my attention that this administration has made a decision that creates serious safety concerns for several Oshkosh area students. For the past five years, I know it's been longer than that, but my kids have been using it for five years. Oshkosh area students who open and roll are being picked up by a neighboring district at a local park and ride located near the district boundaries. For some unknown reason, the administration recently decided to not permit this pickup location and forced the student pickup area down the road to a less safe area. This is an unnecessary decision because state law provides Oshkosh area district with authority to permit another district to do pickup of students. Wisconsin Statute 121.54. These students are Oshkosh residents and we are taxpayers. They deserve the opportunity to get to school safely and the current decision puts bureaucratic politics over student safety. I respectfully request that the board take this issue up at the next board meeting and permit the pickups, pickup of these students within the district's boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. All right, next up, we have Mr. Mike Dillman. Please state your name and your address, please.
Mike Dillman, 1836 North Main here in Oshkosh. I want to elaborate on Mr. Foley's content as far as the pickup of the students. I have a granddaughter that I have guardianship of, who I have attend Winnie County School. Been using his park and ride for quite some time. Being a professional truck driver and a previous school bus driver, anytime a school bus can get off into a safe haven as this park and ride at the corner of County S and County Y, it's a great plus for the safety of the student, whether being taken off the bus or getting on the bus in the morning. Where it's now previously moved to because of the so-called complaint filed by the school board administration here in Oshkosh to Winnie County, where it has been moved to is very unheartening. The kids are getting out of the vehicles. We're talking 14 vehicles at one time lined up on a very small road. They're getting off into ditch lines. When the snow comes, they're going to be getting off into snowbanks. Unsafe. I am requesting the school board to look at the revision of the policy to allow the park and ride to be used by Winnie County School District, seeing as how the park and ride actually borders the Winnie County School District. The park and ride is on the last lot of Oshkosh School. The next lot that is northwest of the park and ride is Winnie County School. No different than Brooks Road that Winnie County and Oshkosh share, where the dividing line is down the middle of Brooks Road, where the north side of this road, the students are picked up by Winnie County. The south side of the road being picked up by Oshkosh. The bus shares the same road. I don't see a reason why we can't share the same park and ride. Just this one exclusive use. I'm not asking for Oshkosh to permit Winnie County or any other school district to use park and rides that are way out of the realm of mileage. We're basically looking at less than 100 feet usage here. I strongly encourage to help us out for the safety of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, before we go any further, I just want, you guys are asking us to do something. We can't engage you in any form of conversation right now. So, I don't want that to be perceived as us not being willing to talk and care about what you're bringing to us. Okay? Next up, I want to try my best to say the name correctly, is Zoe Skadall?
Skadall.
Skadall. Can you please join us up at the table, Zoe? And thank you for correcting me. I appreciate it. And can you, can you, can you tell us who your other person is here with you too as well?
My name is Zoe Skadall and this is my twin brother Cody.
All right, welcome.
So, we and our big sister use the bus stop that is being discussed tonight. When the bus stop was at the park and ride, we could always see our mom when she came to pick us up. Now, when we get off the bus and we have to walk down a street lined with cars to try and find her, we do not feel safe in a new drop-off area. Please think of our and our friends' safety and make the park and ride our bus stop again.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Good job. All right, next I would like to invite Jody Skadall?
Skadall.
Sorry. How quickly I can forget those things. And again, if you could say your name one more time and give us your address as well.
Jody Skadall and we are at 1907 Sky Ranch Avenue in Oshkosh. Here discussing the pickup bus stop also. I'm here to make you aware of a bus stop change that has recently occurred. On March 15th, our family received an email saying that the bus stop, my children, I'm very sorry, for 10 years is no longer an option and it has been moved to Red Fox Road. The road is very narrow and surrounded by many businesses, one being Zilgus. There are many semis and dump trucks that travel this road very often and the safety of the children is the main concern here. Wisconsin State Statute, Chapter 121.54/10 gives Oshkosh Area School District the ability to let Winnie County enter their district and pick up the kids in a safe place just within the district lines. We are asking that you be proactive in this decision. Please put politics aside and think of the safety of our children. I request that the board take this issue up at the next board meeting and permit the pickup of the students within the district's boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that is the end of our signup for non-agenda public, non-agenda-related public forum. We will be moving on to, well, thank you all for providing us with your comments tonight. So, we will be moving on to the agenda, yes?
Can I ask one person to repeat the statute that they said?
You can ask someone to repeat the statute.
I like to read laws, actually. So, could you repeat that statute?
Chapter 121.54/10.
Okay, I got it. I wanted to make sure I hadn't missed a number. Thank you. Thanks.
All right, thank you. So, we're going to move on to agenda-related public forum. And I'm going to go through the rules of public forum again one more time. When addressing the board tonight, one, please clearly state your name and full address and topic you wish to address. If you are acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group that you represent. Two, please clearly state, sorry, state clearly and concisely the matters of concern. Three, please limit your comments to two minutes. Four, please remember that the use of specific names, district personnel, titles or identifiable descriptions may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 920-424-0160 to direct you to the appropriate administrator. All right, first on the list, we have Ms. Stephanie Otto. Come on up and please state your name and your address and you have two minutes.
After a statement address, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I need every second I can get. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Otto. Address is 3446 Milford Drive here in Oshkosh. And I will be speaking about literacy, which is on the agenda tonight. I am the mother of two young students in the district with a third falling close behind. My interest in literacy instruction was sparked during the 2021 school year when we choiced my then-first grader out of the district into a virtual program, which provided much flexibility with curriculum options. While teaching this science of reading, Orton-Gillingham-based reading curriculum, I found myself having many aha moments about the English language. It was all beginning to make sense. No longer did I have to just tell my son a word while reading or, "English is just a tricky language." These tools and rules broke down the language and made it so he could correctly decode almost any word he came across while reading. Knowing we would return to OASD in the future, this led me to begin researching Units of Study and Fountas Ampinell. Here is some of the alarming information I found. In Fall of '21, Ed Reports, a nonprofit organization that reviews K-12 instructional materials, gave both Units of Studies and FMP the lowest rating of Does Not Meet Expectations. Together, under the same publisher, Heinemann, they received the lowest numerical score of any K-2 English Language Arts curriculum. In Colorado, the state is cracking down to implement a 2019 law stating that districts are now required to adopt curriculum off the state's approved list. Guess which programs are not on the approved list? In Massachusetts, grants are being awarded to districts to purchase high-quality core curricular materials. By their state review process curate, neither of Oshkosh's programs are considered high-quality. Arkansas, Mississippi, Ohio, Louisiana and New York City are all making similar changes as well. I encourage the district to take a good, hard look at why we keep spending money, time, professional development hours and most importantly, our children's futures on these proven unsuccessful programs. We are currently on a sinking ship with Units of Study and the entire bounds literacy movement. Now is the time to get on the lifeboat and change course before the ship sinks completely. I applaud that the district is recognizing our weaknesses, but disagree on how to move forward. We should be adopting an evidence-based curriculum that delivers explicit systematic science of reading instruction. Throughout the COVID dependent, sorry, throughout the COVID pandemic, you, the board, pride yourself on making decisions following science and doing what is best for students. It is now time to do what is best for all students and follow the science with literacy instruction. I leave you with a quote, I'm going to butcher this name, from renowned Man Han, the former chief commissioner of the Ontario Human Rights Commission. She said, "Reading is a foundation for success in school, work and life. Learning to read is not a privilege, it is a human right." I couldn't agree more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Ms. Molly Smiltnick? Smiltnick?
We got it right.
All right, Smiltnick, thank you.
I'm Molly Smiltnick, 1855 Hickory Lane. I'm going to have a couple extra seconds, so I do want to address Ms. Wedderow, who is a para at E. Cook. And since I knew her and I did not know she was retiring, I do want to recognize her as an unsung hero of, she's a para, she does everything at that school. She's the crossing guard attendant and she organizes the whole crossing guard. And she reaches out to the kids in very special ways, including to my own kids, making sure she says hi to them every single day while they're just crossing guard and tells them, "Have a great night." And sending, like when Leila was in fifth grade and we suddenly went online, she sent letters home. Those are the kind of unsung heroes that are retiring and they're really great people. We'll miss them.
Before you start, I want to thank you for making those comments.
I hope I didn't waste too much of my time.
You didn't, you didn't, we didn't start it.
But it was worth it. Oh, thank you, Kim. Oh, thank you, Kim. She's awesome, and they all are, I'm sure, but we'll miss her. Our family has been working with Oshkosh Area School District for five years on an effort to improve literacy resources for all students in the district. In those five years that we've been advocating, there are districts and states that have made real progress. There are even states that are banning certain curriculums because they've proven ineffective, but Oshkosh is not one of them. In fact, we continue to invest more in curriculum that does not work. Instead of being a leader, we've chosen to fall farther behind. Yes, there's a legacy of people who are gone, but the administrative leaders putting up barriers and applying Band-Aids to gaping wounds, sprinkle a few decodable books here, add a phonics curriculum that isn't systematic or explicit there, reports and workshops and rhetoric with lots of words and little action all remain the same. The district has yet to ask the hard questions or to engage stakeholders. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, it's time to stop placating the board and trying to control the conversation, and it's time for real engagement and action. It's time to get serious about literacy. Admin needs to seek out stakeholders, listen, learn, and make data-informed substantive changes. Kids are suffering. Our family fights this fight, not because our two children with dyslexia were not identified as struggling to read and subsequently failed to be taught how to read as students of Oshkosh Area School District. It's not just our kids or kids with dyslexia. At best, 40% of Oshkosh students are reading at grade level, as demonstrated by objective forward exam scores. You can try to downplay and justify the facts as much as you want, but it's a fact. Our kids can't read. This is a problem long before the pandemic, and we will continue to fail our students unless you engage parents and classroom teachers, listen to other experts, give teachers new resources to engage, identify, and intervene, and implement these programs with fidelity. We will not give up this fight, because every student deserves the opportunity to succeed, to succeed, or at least to learn how to read in school. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Ms. Leila Smeltnick.
Hello, I'm Leila Smeltnick. I'm a seventh grader at Webster Stanley Middle School. I'm also dyslexic. If you don't know, dyslexia is a learning disorder. That means I have trouble learning to read, write, and spell the way the school teaches me. When I was younger, reading wouldn't be fun or educational to me as it should be. It was a burden. A time in school when I, when I was focused, when I was forced to stare at a page of letters I didn't understand for 30 minutes. A time in school I dreaded. In second grade, I read the same 10-page book about whales as my free-choice book for the whole year. Well, it wasn't really reading. It was more like I studied the words so many times that I had it memorized. I refused to pick a new book from the classroom library, because I didn't have those books memorized. Even in the school library, I read books from the same marine life section until I was in third or fourth grade, because I know those, I knew those 14 books by heart. As for my writing, it was unreadable those years. It was less a sentence and more a hodgepodge of letters, for example. I knew there were letters, more letters in outside than O, T, S, and D, so I just added random letters. But then, at the beginning of third grade, I started at relearning with my reading teacher, Ms. Stanky, and it all changed. All the sounds in outside that I could not associate with letters had rules as to why they were like that. She taught me that the OU in about makes an ow sound, because two vowels next to each other make different sounds than they do when they are separated. Thanks to Ms. Stanky, I was able to read books my younger self couldn't even fathom reading the first page of. Unfortunately, there are kids who were at school just a few hours ago, who were staring at the pages blankly, thinking they would never succeed in life, because their brains didn't work the way the curriculum wanted them to. This is unfortunate, because I know most of them don't have the resources that I have to get help outside of school that I, get to help outside of school that I did. And they don't deserve to never know how to read, because you neglected to teach them the ways they needed to be taught. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did a great, great job, Leila. All right. So I want to thank everyone that participated in the public forum this evening. We will be moving on to our workshop this evening. So, and that workshop is, it's an elementary reading resource audit presentation that will be led by Diana Krasovic from CISA 6, and Dr. Kim Brown, Linda Kuhop, and I don't know the first name, Ms. Duxbury, or Dukesbury.
Ms. Duxbury is not available this evening.
Okay.
Let me right here?
Okay. Well, so, thank you for joining us, Diana. It's great to, great to see you. So I wanted to start, kick off the workshop tonight, just with some of my observations, being a fresh set of eyes on the system, and certainly during my interview process, I know literacy and math were one of our top priorities. And so that's something that I've investigated, just in my introduction process, as I was getting around to all of the schools, touching base with all of the principals, sitting in on teacher professional development, and really focusing on those two areas. So I wanted to just start the workshop by providing some of those observations and things that I've learned up to this point, and then hand it off to Diana to talk a little bit about the resource audit that she provided. So again, superintendent observations, first of all, when we were talking about math and literacy, I think what became clear to me, you know, through my process of talking to all of the principals individually, was that literacy, and specifically early literacy, is our greatest opportunity for academic growth. We really needed to make strides to dig down in that area. And primarily, it was around more structure and improved resources. I, you know, it's feeling like we were pretty loose and didn't necessarily have the resources that we did, that we needed to make sure that we're, you know, addressing all students' needs. So that came across really clearly through my introduction process as we, as we move forward. Specifically, I think, as you heard tonight, support for students with dyslexia and related conditions being a priority, not only in the universe, or having that within the universal instruction, I think is critically important. We want to be as proactive as possible. We don't necessarily want to be dependent on interventions. So pushing that instruction into the universal instruction with explicit phonics lessons, decodable books are a couple ways to be able to do that. But also getting a defined intervention process that we have for students that are showing these signs, and define that process and make sure that we have interventionist support for all of our students that would be in that situation. The other thing, another thing that's been clear in my process and going around, not only in my introductions, but also my second time around schools, is that Dr. Kuhop's leadership as a literacy director has made an immediate impact. So she hasn't been with us for very long, but it's really clear when you talk to our teachers, our IST reading specialists, and talking to our principals, that her leadership, not only from a professional development standpoint, so the ability to have a cohesive message and guidance at large groups, but also to be boots on the ground in watching, you know, kids specifically reading, you know, watching interventionist work, watching classroom work, and being able to give accurate, concise feedback, has been really important. So I just want to thank Linda for that, for her leadership, and recognize that her impact has been immediate, and we look forward to many, many years of her, of her leadership. But I just wanted to be able to acknowledge that. And also the fact that we identify that partnerships are critical for us moving forward for continuous improvement. So although we have a very strong, you know, leader in Dr. Kuhop and Dr. Brown, we also know that we don't have all the answers, and that we naturally have blind spots, just based on our experiences and what we know within the system. Sometimes we're too close to it, so to be able to have partners is really important, and we'll continue to have partners as we're monitoring our progress and improvement as we're going throughout our literacy journey. Specifically, as you'll hear tonight, CISA 6 Literacy Center has been an important partner for us early on, and we intend to be able to continue that relationship, certainly in a more intensive way, probably over the next couple of years, to make sure that we're continuing to provide that support. And also, just a note for the Literacy Task Force of Wisconsin, so they've been important partners. We were able to stop at one of their booths, and I think some of you did also at the, at the school boards convention, to be able to get some resources. I had received a book, Six Shifts book, during that time, and just really have them be, be a good partner for us in resources, and to be able to look at things a little bit differently than we have historically. So that'll be, that'll be another important partnership for us, and we know that there's other partners out there that'll be able to help us out as we're moving forward. So we just want to make sure that we're open to that, that, you know, we feel we have a strong team, but that we're always reaching out to make sure that we have the most comprehensive perspective as possible. I think specifically for, for the school board, in kind of this question of, you know, what can you do? You know, one, I think the role identity, as we've talked about for, since the beginning of my time here, is really important, between the board's role and superintendent role, critical for sustained systemic early literacy success, and understanding who's doing what. Specifically, from a school board's perspective, and I've asked for this, I think, since probably my interview, before I received the contract, is accountability. I think the system has to have explicit accountability, and people need to be held accountable for those measures. That needs to start with me, and it needs to start, I would advocate, start in the early literacy section, because we know that that's our most important need as we're growing our learners as we're moving forward. So, so just given an option, just a specific policy reference on our reading and literacy instructional goals and assessment, that would be an appropriate spot for us to take a look at some of those measures, but really to bake in within policy, measuring growth, proficiency and growth. A lot of times, we talk about proficiency, which is really important, but having proficiency and growth is also, I think, the growth factor for us is something that we look at, because we know we have learners that aren't starting, maybe historically where our learners have started. So celebrating that growth, along with that proficiency, is really important. And then provide some options up there for indicators that we feel are appropriate for us to rally around, things that, so the PALS assessment and I Ready assessments being leading indicators, meaning that those are, those are assessments that we can use to improve our instruction in real time, as we have periodic assessments throughout the year. And also, the forward exam certainly is something that we're held accountable for publicly, and that we want to make sure that we embrace and see the alignment between the PALS and the I Ready assessments and the forward exam. The forward exam is a lagging indicator, because basically, the kids would take the test now and wouldn't get the results back until later, so you're not able to use those exam scores with the current teacher. That's different than like the PALS testing, where you'd be able to get that back and work through some improvements in real time. There's certainly other assessments that we use, but I would advocate for those three assessments to be something that we have some future conversations about for accountability, writing in policy, and then following up with the superintendent's evaluation as we, as we move forward. My commitment, then, would be to continue to work with our staff and with our partners to design programming and supports to achieve the board targets. So in other words, we have targets that we're working for, we're held responsible for those results. How we get to those results is what will use the best expertise that we have between our internal staff and our partners, and we will make progress on our early literacy scores. I'm convinced of that. It'll take a little bit of time, and certainly, we want to, you know, continue to support our staff with as many resources and professional development as we can get, get going. But that's, that would be just some of my observations, again, from, you know, my first eight months here in Oshkosh, related to our literacy program. So I wanted to call it specifically, and acknowledge, which we've heard, heard from tonight already, but the fact that we do have dyslexia and other related conditions in students and families that, that are working, working through those situations, and that we need to be able to make sure that our action plan includes explicit actions that will help support those students and families. So our collaboration with CISA 6 and the Early Literacy Academy, that's something that will be ongoing, will help support that. Our professional development in the reading foundational levels, Six Shifts books, which I mentioned before, getting at those specific areas that we'd want to highlight in phonemic awareness and phonics training. Decodable books for our bookrooms, which again, is part of the solution. There's no silver bullets here, but it's part of the solution. And also focusing on interactive reading, interactive writing and shared reading, to make sure that those materials directly align with the phonemic awareness and phonics instruction that students are getting in other places. So I had the good fortune of being able to, to sit in in a classroom over at Oakwood Elementary and watch an interactive writing sample that was a great example of a teacher not only working on writing skills, but also bringing that phonics instruction directly into that space. So that was great to watch, and I know we have that going throughout the district and need to be able to just continue to build those resources and that support. So, so those are things that are specifically baked into our action plan, as you'll hear a little bit later. So why do a literacy audit? Again, we believe that having partners is a critical part for us to be able to move forward. Understanding our strengths and weaknesses of current literacy resources is really important. This audit focuses, it's not a comprehensive audit on everything that we do from a literacy perspective. We're really focused on our early literacy, and we focus specifically, in this case, on literacy resources. So Diana did not, in this case, did not have an opportunity to go into classrooms and observe classrooms, which we know the fidelity of and development of those methods and use of those resources is where the rubber hits the road. But we needed to start at some point, and we wanted to make sure that we made progress on that, starting with those literacy resources. So what you'll hear tonight, then, is an assessment of those literacy resources that Kim and Linda have been following up, specifically with classroom observations. So those, if you have questions about those classroom observations, then they would be happy to answer. We intend to be able to work with Diana as we're moving forward, to bring CISA 6 in to help us support some of those classroom instructions and do some of those observations. We just haven't gotten to that point at this point. So, and again, it's all about developing our goals around continuous improvement and helping our leadership team better understand where we are from a practice standpoint. So with that, I'll turn it over to Diana.
Thank you. So good evening, everybody. My name is Diana Krasovic. I am the director of the Literacy Center at CISA 6. Just a little bit about myself, I'm new to the center. I have a reading specialist license. I had practiced being a reading specialist for much of my career, as well as a literacy coach, an elementary principal, and my last gig, so to speak, was a CNI director at a K-12 district. So I have that experience behind me and have enjoyed getting to know the administrative team here and coming and engaging in the resource audit. So Brian did a really great job of explaining the purpose of an audit, and this one was specific to the resources that Oshkosh uses in looking at teaching literacy to students. We looked at core or universal instruction, as well as supplemental. So core universal instruction is instruction for all students, and then supplemental are additional resources that are used a little bit more at a teacher discretion, perhaps for all students, perhaps for smaller groups of students. So I met with the leadership team, got to understand the district's homegrown units, the process that they put together, and all the work that has gone into that. We identified what was core universal resources, which are those units, as well as the units of study in phonics. And then we identified the supplemental resources of the Fountas and Penel mini-lesson book and the, in reading, and the Fountas and Penel interactive read aloud. And so the resource audit included a deep look into those resources, looking against look-for indicators, which came out of multiple places of research that are all referenced in the report. We agreed upon those indicators after looking at them and making sure we all understood the research that was behind all of those indicators. And then we also developed, I also developed a teacher survey for K-2 teachers, specific to foundational skills and implementation of phonics. So the data collection and the resource review included these core areas or criterion, district expectation. So I had the view of looking at each of the resources from that lens of what did the district expect in the, in the curriculum binder, and did the resource align and support those expectations? Were they clear for teachers, et cetera? Student engagement and agency, really looking at, were there, was there evidence of activities that would engage students and create agency, which is really like feeling like a reader, being a reader, identifying as a reader. Alignment to the Wisconsin standards. Foundational skills was a whole separate area of the, the audit, looking specifically at what makes a good phonics curriculum. That came out of multiple different indicators and research. Align to science of reading, I know that was brought up earlier. So a lot of those pieces were in, embedded in, in the criterion. We looked at rigor, so are students engaged, but is it also lifting the level of their, of their learning, and is it rigorous? We looked at equity. Were, are the materials, do they have representation from different cultures, from different backgrounds? Do we have opportunities for all students to learn? And then clarity for teachers and stakeholders. The stakeholder lens that I really looked at was the parent lens. The stakeholder lens that I really looked at was the parent lens, and did the resources create opportunities to engage parents? And then, of course, that clarity for teachers is so important so that they have the support they need to implement as best as they can. So for each of the resources, in the report I included celebrations, it's always important to celebrate, there's always something to celebrate, and then key opportunities for improvement. These are not all of those, these are some highlights. So I know that you've received the full report and all of the findings are in that report, both in a data format, in those appendices, and also in a paragraph format. So some key celebrations, as you can see here, with the homegrown reading units of study, they aligned and met the district expectations and were very clear. Student engagement was, is supported throughout the units. It talks about students having voice and choice and lots of time to read. There were mini lessons that were sequenced in a way that made sense and supported a gradual learning path. There were opportunities to interact with grade level text, with the mentor texts that were used in the mini lessons. They were aligned to the Wisconsin standards, and there were comments within the units that reflected trusting teachers and letting teachers know that they needed to meet the needs of their students. And both information and literature were both, those two genres were pretty balanced within the units. Some key opportunities for improvement is those supports for teachers, the teacher clarity around language, what to say, how to say it, ideas for what you could say, what to do if kids are struggling. Those kinds of supports could be an area for improvement. The phonics instruction was not linked directly to these units. So the idea that you would be able to reference some phonics skills that you're learning in the units of study for phonics in a mini lesson or in a reading lesson was not yet aligned. Assessment tools were not provided within the unit. They were referenced sort of inherently, but not provided. I will say though, that the district guidelines around assessment did include things like references to forward and I Ready and those kinds of things, but formative assessments that would help you in the moment make decisions about instruction were not included. So that's the difference. Shared reading, which Brian referenced earlier as being one of the goals and one of the contexts for phonics practice, those texts are referenced within the units. However, those books are not guaranteed and viable across the district yet for all teachers. And then from the equity standpoint, the homegrown units probably scored the lowest. The mentor texts were not always included. The ones that were included with titles would have scored well. I looked them all up and, you know, but because they're not all included and not guaranteed and viable that every teacher has it and every teacher is using the same book, I couldn't score that at a higher rating, if that makes sense. So the district is working on with Linda's leadership as well, newly coming on board, making these revisions to the reading units. So I did make sure that when I looked at the units, and I should say, I did look like at a sampling of units at every grade level, and then at the K-2, at least one of the units was a foundational unit, a foundational skill unit, which is how I could see that it wasn't connected to the phonics units. So the district's engaging in this work, and so I looked at one of the units, it was a first grade unit, where this work was probably the furthest along at the time of the audit. And these were the observations of the work in progress. So the additional supports in that explicit teacher language that was missing is being added. Alignment with the Interactive Read Aloud, which we'll talk about in a little bit, it's a supplemental resource. That is now being aligned with the mini lessons and the text, the texts that are used for mentor texts. So where in the other units, they're not listed and not all teachers have them, now they're being aligned so that they're listed and all teachers have them. The standards are prioritized for each mini lesson, so although it was aligned with standards, they weren't identified per lesson, and that is become, that is a revision that the district is making. And then opportunities for students to listen and speak about reading is being leveraged within those units. So although that's probably was happening with a lot of teachers, it wasn't actually part of the explicitness of the unit, and so that is being added. Key opportunities for improvement or continued improvement even beyond these things that are being added is the district has purchased the shared reading materials, so that was identified as a gap, that it wasn't viable and guaranteed for everybody, and now that will be moving forward, and those will be aligned to the units. There will be a direct alignment to the phonics units of study and identified for teachers where they can in this mini lesson reference phonics, and then probably aligned, I would imagine, in your scope and sequence. Strengthen the expectations for the use of the mini lesson book. So the Fontis and Pennell Mini Lesson Book is a supplemental resource that I did take a look at. In and of itself, by itself, it scores well in a lot of areas. Where it is difficult when, or challenging when districts use that resource is the work to align it to your current units. So it will provide teachers with more of that explicit language around what to do, how to say it, how to help students who are struggling, but it needs to be aligned, and so that's the work they're engaging in. And then ensuring the pacing of the mini lessons matches the time limit. So many of the units said they should be like six weeks long, but there weren't enough lessons to actually be six weeks long, or four to six weeks, I think it said. So that is part of the work that needs to continue to happen as well. And then fantasy and realistic fiction are identified in the literacy curriculum, the Oshkosh literacy curriculum, but there are no specific units built yet or written yet. So you can see, there's a lot of work being done to make the improvements that were recommended and beyond. So the next universal core instruction piece that we looked at, or resource piece that I looked at, was the units of study in phonics. This is, I guess, the first year of implementation. It was delayed because of COVID, I think, yeah. So some key celebrations, so, and when you read the report, I aligned the report with the success factors of a phonics curriculum, and a lot of that is actually defined by Wiley Blevins, who is a leader in the science of reading, and also aligned with some of the dyslexia work that's in the field right now. So they, a scope and sequence that is, that, it also includes opportunities for spiraling and practice is one of the key factors of a really good phonics program. And so this particular phonics program does have a scope and sequence. There are online resources that are in addition, that you need to have a login to be able to see and access. So if, so some of these features are in those resources that teachers have access to. So there is a scope and sequence. It does recognize things like alphabet recognition of phonemic awareness, blending, which is a power skill, they say. It's called like a power skill for early readers, dictation and other interactive writing, which Brian mentioned earlier as well. It includes word awareness and routines, high frequency words, and reading in connected text. There are opportunities, just like every resource, for improvement. So the routines that are explicit in helping students to blend and segment could be more explicit in this particular resource, and the use of Elkonin boxes or soundboxes could be more explicit. Those are high leverage routines that are known by research and proven to be effective for teaching phonics. And so those could be a little bit stronger in this particular resource. Oral blending and oral segmenting, which should be daily practice at particularly kindergarten and first grade, could be stronger and could be, and should be a daily routine in a classroom, and that is probably one of the gaps in this particular resource. And this resource does recognize the need for decodable text, and some have already been added by the publisher of this resource, but additional decodable text and how to use them, which is a key piece, not just having them, but how to use them to support phonics work, is another place for improvement with this particular resource. Okay, the Interactive Read Aloud is a Fontis and Pennell resource. This is a supplemental resource that the district recently purchased. So Interactive Read Aloud is the, it's a little bit different than the read aloud you might be thinking, which is just, you know, sit down and just listen to a great book. That's still, there's still a place for that in our classrooms. An Interactive Read Aloud takes it a little step further, and it engages students in listening to the teacher think out loud, it's called Think Aloud, to model the kinds of thinking readers do when they're engaged in reading a text. It's highly about comprehension and vocabulary, and then it also engages, the routine engages students in talk and discussion about their thinking and about the text and that comprehension piece. Oral language, which is where Interactive Read Aloud fits, is a key prerequisite factor for learning to read and for phonics instruction. And that's been proven and has a lot of research behind that. So Interactive Read Aloud is a wonderful thing that the district has recognized is a need in our classrooms, and this resource actually scored very, very well, particularly in the equity area. The books are beautiful, they're very diverse, and cover multiple different genre, and each book comes with a teacher card that could be a way the teacher could do the lesson, and so it's highly supported, and that's one of the key celebrations. It's highly supported for teachers, so it would be something that would be a quick win and an easy lift for a lot of teachers to engage in learning how to do the Interactive Read Aloud. Those lessons are highly supported, there are some formative assessment opportunities, most of which are, you know, anecdotal or perhaps like an exit ticket. The thing about Read Aloud that's so important is that it allows every student access to grade level text. So a struggling reader who can't read a grade level text by themselves yet can listen and engage and talk and learn the vocabulary and the content and that rich oral language of a grade level text by being part of an Interactive Read Aloud. That's why it's so critically important to be in your literacy classrooms. So those are all really great celebrations that the district has in place. Some key opportunities for improvement is that continued work of aligning those to the units of study so that there's sort of a cohesive flow. And standards are aligned with the Fontis and Pennell Literacy Continuum, but not all classroom teachers have access to that professional resource. It's a book that is a continuum of reading behaviors that's aligned with the standards and sort of pulls apart and very detailed, very, very detailed version of like all the different reading behaviors that students need to have, and it shows them that through each grade level. So right now, that's an area for improvement to make sure everybody has that and knows how to use it or reference it.
So this is me.
Yep.
So we just wanted, with the audit, we also want to, as we move on to looking at the literacy plan based on recommendations, is just take a look and talk about our past practice and current practice, where we're already started movement this year and that we want to deepen as we go along. So the past practice has been, we cover the standards, we've got these to teach, we've got to cover them, to having all of our teachers this year go through a year-long process, or eight-month process it's been, with professional development to identify through the English Language Arts Standards, what are most essential. So our teachers really took a look at all of the ELA standards that we do make sure that all our students have, can be instructed with, but there are some that are, need to be mastered for that next grade level. And so looking through that lens, we've identified what is essential, and then teachers have started to look and unpack that of how do we get our kids to master them? If it's so important, they are needed for the next grade level, then how do we need to teach and what do we need to assess? So that therefore are formative assessments that Diana was talking before that need to be improved within our reading units. We go beyond just measuring some big chunky data, that's where we, that's our summative we need to get there, but what are, what's the data we can use along the way to inform our practice? And so knowing what students need to master, how will we, what are checkpoints to do that? We are moving from an inconsistent phonics curriculum, and I know I'm new, but I've heard, I did my own dipstick with many principals, teachers, and all of our literacy department to find out about phonics in the past, and there was a phonics program, but it just was not used for whatever reasons that might be. And usually the reasons are, it just wasn't teacher-user friendly or in a way that was cohesive to the needs of the teachers. So we, I know there was quite a lengthy and great field study of work and pilot of which phonics curriculum we would have, and I really believe, even with the COVID, just seeing going into many, many classrooms this year, there is a very strong implementation of the K-2 phonics units of study. It is very strong. Teachers are loving it, it is, and we're also working within that, a more formalized teaching of the letter formation right away at kindergarten. I think that's also, was a missing piece of, we have to teach letter formation, but formally, what are, how do we do that? What's the scope and sequence of doing that? And so we've integrated that and given professional development to all of our K-1 teachers, but really focusing on letter formation at kindergarten. We, this year, are moving, really taking a look at moving from teacher-centered coaching or relationship of what do you need and how can I support you kind of coaching, to what do the students need to learn and what are you working on in this unit and how are they doing right now? And how do we plan, prepare, and co-teach together so that we can, over a course of a unit, together, we are looking to see how we're going to make a difference for students? So it's on impacting student data, student learning, and within that, teachers' instruction changes. So it is, it's just, is a new emphasis from a focus on teaching to a focus on learning, and both change as you focus on that learning. And then we, there was, at each site, there were, was, you know, kind of site-specific team plans for students that have reading concerns, and we have created a district plan for students with dyslexia and other related conditions that we've ensured that all of our principals and literacy department have talked with all staff, so we know that that has happened in all of our elementary schools that, to know exactly what that plan is. And that plan really begins with taking a look and hearing any concerns and looking at the data, and then student by student, making that decision of what are our next steps for those students. So it's systematic, and we know now that we have a district plan rather than site plan for that.
All right. We are going to be moving into our action plan, but before we do that, we didn't know if you would have any questions specifically on the audit before we move to the action.
I have one. As I was going through some of the research behind, behind the presentation, it talked about a high-quality curriculum provides more coherence and connection, the sequencing of learning between grade levels. I can see a lot of different things coming together. Talk to me a little bit about how we get from point A to point B. Is grade two, grade two, grade three, grade three? Or have we been able to implement some flexibility to allow students to get those students up to where they should be and those that are a little bit more ready to move quickly into the next chapter?
I think that's a lot of our focus that we've been doing this year, is we've been going into classrooms to see what was happening and then to also meet with the literacy coach and the principals and looking specifically at data. and then to also meet with the literacy coach and the principals and looking specifically at data. And as we've been looking at data for classrooms, we've been looking at who are the kids that absolutely need more? And coming up with that plan about what does that look like? How are you gonna know when they get there? And then we came back the next month, you know, where are we with that? And then, you know, that's been sort of the fun is to just take a look at watching the kids get better and making sure we really hone in on that. That is not something that we have always gone into classrooms and working with principals to look at and hone, but I feel like that is making an impact this year. And I see that just growing as we continue, especially with the pieces that Linda and her team are really developing. The next district collaboration is really around formative assessment. And I think that's going to be that next step for teachers to really take some more ownership with that piece.
And I, and then, yeah, and I would just also say where we will be working toward a, with that formative assessment piece. And, and it really ties into student-centered coaching as well. What do the students already know before I begin this unit of study? And what, what does that data say? So we are looking at, in a pre-assessment, what do we, what are some things if students already know it? Most of the kids already know it, then that doesn't, then I don't need to focus instructional time. I might need small groups for that. If I have a small percentage of students that already know it, then, then with, with a literacy coach, teachers can then work on, what does that mean for these students? What, what's that next? And we have a beautiful vertical articulation of what are those next standards and along the way? So it, in literacy, it's, it's actually pretty easy to differentiate as, with that complexity, but we really need to help our teachers first hone in on who already knows it before we even begin.
Can I follow up? I, I like where this is going, but it is so important to me that we are serving all of the students of the district, those that need to get caught up, but those that need to get pushed. Are we able to offer opportunities for those that need to get pushed, challenged?
And, and I, I, a 100%. And I think that's where we need to do a better job in all of our classrooms. At beginning of these units to what do our students already know? And if they know it, then we don't go, we don't do the business as usual.
You talked a little bit earlier about gathering the parent lens viewpoint for the audit. And as you know, we have a very strong group of parents that have been advocating for five years now for a literacy update. So I was just wondering if you would mind elaborating on the process to gather that parent lens viewpoint and, and how you incorporated them in this, this audit?
I think it was, I think it was more looking at the literacy, at this point, we were just looking at literacy resources. And there was a lens on that resource of how did that engage? How were we, what was the parent component of that? Just looking at that resource for that.
Right. Some resources that are out there in the, in the area of literacy will have opportunities to send things home or practice things at home with parents or suggestions about, you know, send this home to a parent or talk about this with parents. And so that was when I looked at clarity for teachers and stakeholders. My stakeholder lens was really the parent. Were there pieces in the curriculum that, that said, oh, you know, this is a way to, you know, sometimes there's like a letter at the beginning of the unit that you sent home and engage parents and this is what your students are gonna be learning. Try this. And really all, none of the resources in this particular audit had that. That doesn't mean that teachers couldn't be doing that and might be doing that already or that that couldn't be added, but it's not currently in those resources. So we, we had not talked about engaging parents and, at least with myself, other than me just kind of having that lens on what do we have there that supports parent engagement?
Dr. Herzog and Ms. Salaji.
If you wouldn't mind, I would defer to Ms. Salaji and I'll follow up.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah. So I will work.
I think she was first.
I'll work backwards. I have questions about a few of the slides. So slide 12, I just wanna say I really like the focus on mastering essential standards. As a teacher, it's complicated to get this huge booklet of standards and have to go through all of them. So I know how necessary it is to focus on essential standards and make sure students are mastering them. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. My question has to do with kind of connecting that and the next one. Are the assessments that we are using in the classroom in these units? Also, I guess the assessments on slide, I think they're on slide three. Are these assessments aligned to helping teachers know if students are mastering those essential standards? So like the PALS and the I Ready?
Oh, great question.
Yes.
Yes. So, so what I would say, yes, but they only, you know, PALS, we get the beginning of the year. And then we have middle for those that have, that are IDed as, as looking at, at that screener. And then, then at the end of the year. So they absolutely are huge diagnostic, you know, information. A screener to first take a look and for, for us to look, do we need to go deeper on some of our students? And they, they, they have, you know, it's different at the K-1, 2, of course, that's more advanced as you, you go through that. So that for sure is, is perfect. It does, it does capture letter identification, sounds, phonemic awareness, phonics, some connected reading of text, all of that is in there. What we need is, is to ensure that for those, those, on the day-to-day, when we think this is what a student needs to do in the year, what does that break down of where should our students, what should they have mastered by this time and this time and this time? And so that is, that is, in fact, we're gonna be talking about that at our, our next professional development on April 13th of how do you take a standard? And how do you break it across that year and unpack it to, to take a look across the year? And what would assessments look like that actually get to that rigor of what that standard is? So that, so that, so we're really going to really, really dig deep so that teachers feel like I have that support that I, I, I have, that I can, I can see. And it's just part of what I do in the classroom. It's not one more thing. As wonderful as PALS is, it really is great information. Teachers know it takes time and it feels like it's taking away from instruction, but yet it's so important. The assessment that we want formatively to do this is, it's just what we do. It's embedded with an instruction and I can right away utilize it to know who I need to target, who, who is flying that can be doing something else.
Right, like what Ms. Wimms was meaning?
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, so that's what's needed.
Okay, thank you. For as long as I've been on this board and wherever we've had conversations about assessments, I've noticed that as a teacher, it would really frustrate me to not see that alignment. So I'm excited that at this point, we're like moving towards that. I know some of that's out of our control with the forward exam and things. On slide 10, it talked about Elkinen boxes. And I think we discussed this at our education committee meeting, but I just wanted to repeat it here for transparency for the whole public. Is this something that would require a new curriculum? Or is this something that is easily implemented with the tools and things we already have?
I would not say it would require a new curriculum. It's really a, it's really a routine that could be taught. And really all you need literally is a piece of paper and maybe some chips for the sounds. It's, it's referenced in the curriculum. It would fit very well. And maybe you even saw it when you saw the interactive writing. A lot of times it's used as part of an interactive writing. But that is not, that's something that you could do with PD. You don't need a, a different curriculum to implement that.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
And, and we are definitely, will be doing it in PD, so yes.
Yeah.
It has been done in interactive writing in some of the classrooms.
Yeah. But we just wanna make it universal.
Yeah.
And it's a key part of like that blending routine that is in this curriculum. But that could probably be leveraged with teachers. So it happens explicitly in the, in the direct instruction part and then also in the connected text, which is the interactive writing and shared reading.
Perfect, thank you. So slide four, under the shifting the balance, there was mention of the queuing system. So can you help me understand how the queuing system helps students, specifically our students who have dyslexia or dysgraphia or other specific language learning disabilities? How does queuing system help them become better readers and spellers?
We can, we can tag teams. So we, we can tag team a little bit on this, but it's, it really, we're looking here at how do we shift our look at the queuing system so that? And I'll just tell you, when I was trained, you know, for the, how to use the queuing system, I was trained in a way that absolutely aligns with the science of reading. I went through the whole 50 hours of letters training. I can tell you it was aligned. But in practice, that doesn't always happen and sometimes that there's misunderstanding of it. So really, it's a matter of when we are reading, we, readers look at the visual. That's the, the visual part. And they, they look and they need to make sure that across that word, you're looking at those, those letters and sounds and you're making that connection. Along with that, it also has to make sense and sound right with our, our language. Because there are words in text that could have a vowel, could say many different things. And so you have to be able to flex that in that. So meaning and, and structure comes in that. I would say really in the, in what the six shifts and what, what, what we're asking our teachers and we want professional development to do is to, to help any teachers who may have drifted from the visual, to ensure that visual is a key part in reading. And when you're looking how, what, when students are reading connected text, how are they looking at? Are they just looking at first letter? If they are, then what is our next step for them? Are they looking at beginning and end but ignoring the middle? What does that mean? So, so we are looking through all of that. So there's a more, so really the professional development will be, what do we, when we're looking at visual, what exactly are we looking at when it comes to that? So that, that's what I would say.
Because that's what my concern was, is I've helped my young children try to learn to read, which I'm not trained in how to do that. I've noticed they look at like beginning and end and just guess what the middle is.
Yes.
Was concerned that the queuing system might be part of the reasoning for that. But what I'm hearing you say is that the queuing system is making sure that if students are doing that, they catch them.
It's for the teacher to know what are they, right? What are they maybe even just sampling? And then, then knowing from what we've taught. So we've got it connected to our teaching. What should we expect of students? So that, so if they are ignoring different parts that they've been taught, then, then we've got some, some targeting to do for that.
Can I just add?
Please.
And the queuing system, the word queuing is simply that, like what are the cues that you could say as a teacher to get the students to do the thinking? And I think in the shift, I know in the shift book, as you know, it's a shift from starting with checking the picture to starting with looking at the word. So that's the shift and that's what structured literacy is about. It's about looking at all the letters in the word first. And we never wanna lose meaning, so you have to check meaning, but you have to start with the word first. And that's where decodable texts tie in as well, because we saw that on Brian's slide and then I referenced it as well. So again, giving kids the opportunity to directly practice the phonics skills that you taught by giving them decodable books. And then helping teachers know how to use those. And where do you use leveled books? Because there, there's a place for those as well and they're important as well. So that balance and figuring out what, what's the purpose of each and when to use them. And, and you're totally right. Like the MSV or the queuing system is, is really about assessment more than it is about instruction.
Like about teaching, yeah. Okay, thank you. That, as I saw that, that sounded like I need to ask this a question so that they can help me understand it, because I didn't understand it just by seeing that word. I'm checking off the slides. So back to slide three, I know we kind of already touched on it. I have two parts and they might have more to do with future committee work. But one thing is the policy. I'm the chair of the policy committee, so when I see a policy up there, I'm like, okay, what, as a committee, do we need to do? And I don't, wanted to get input from the board if that would be something we prefer as looked at at the policy committee? Or if that's something we prefer to look at as a whole group? Or maybe Dr. Davis's intent is even to look at that tonight? I don't know, I just wanted to kind of check in with what the next step is for that.
Yeah, I didn't have intent to do that tonight. I think, yeah, I would be open to whatever the board feels is the best route to be able to, to take that on.
Okay. I, I mean, I don't need answers right now. Putting that out there that I want to know if that's something we should do at committee first or if we feel like we should all decide it here together a different night?
The guidance that I might provide is that both the education committee and the poli, and the policy committee look at it.
Okay, yeah.
In tandem. And then, you know, try to work off of that, that insight that's provided through that work.
Okay. Perfect, I appreciate that. We're in agreement with that. I'm actually on both those committees, so. All right. The next part has to go back doing with the assessments there on slide three. And I don't know if this is something that the legislative committee would be interested in or if Dr. Davis feels like it's a possibility. But I know he and I talked about this once, that I really feel like to see success in our forward exam, which is a lagging indicator. To see success in our forward exam scores, which is what the community and the state and everyone sees as our scores. We need to be able to have a similar forward exam assessment that is a leading indicator that teachers can use during the school year. I know that was my experience as a teacher, that I did not have PALS, I Ready Forward. I didn't have separate. Everything that I used was called the DC CAS. And so I'd get a leading indicator four times a year with this DC CAS assessment that was aligned to this essential standards. And then I was evaluated based on that lagging indicator. I know that the DC Public School System took this approach. They borrowed it from the state of Massachusetts. And anyone who follows education outcomes regularly would probably know that Massachusetts has been a leader in literacy scores for over a decade now. So I just kind of give that background information because I don't know if that's something the legislative committee feels like they could start pushing the state or if we feel like as a district that it's appropriate to push the state? Because that's something that's out of our control. We can't make for mid-year forward exam tests. But I think it would be beneficial to all the students in Wisconsin if the forward exam was not just a lagging indicator, but also a leading indicator. Was that clear? Because.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. And I think that's something we can talk about as, as part of the legislative, legislative committee. I, I think, I mean, that's not, that's not an easy process. That's, that's a lot of money and, and time as we, as we would look at it. So, but, but it's certainly something we can discuss. I, I know that from my conversations, and I believe Dr. Herzog was there with Senator Fian, I, I know he's very interested in accountability and, and student results and, and these types of tests. So I, I think there's, there's certainly like interest in that accountability. It's just a matter of can we get alignment and can we get useful information, you know, from some of these standardized tests? So we, we certainly can discuss it. I, I would, I would make sure that we're doing that along with what we believe we can build in locally that we can control to be able to help our kids. I wouldn't, I certainly wouldn't wait for, for probably anything out of the, the state legislature necessarily in this regard, so. But it, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't have that conversation. I think it's, it's probably worthy.
I think it will, oh yeah, I'll let him.
You go ahead.
I think we're all saying, we all kind of did the whispering. But one thing we, because I Ready is, is newer for us and is, and really it, it is, and I think the research will show that it is, that it is an indicator for how students will do on the forward. So we have a leading indicator that should be something that we can see for forward. So I think that across time will, I think we, we will see that, that is, that's.
Because the state probably won't grant my wish within the next few months. So we have to have something to work with in the meantime.
Yeah, and, and Diane was saying too, Diana was saying that in I Ready, we can look at standard by standard. So with these essential standards, we can pull those out and see how students are doing on those essentials as well. So we can connect all of that together too.
So I know I Ready is a nationwide program, but their standards are comparable or in alignment with our state standards?
Yes, they will, they align to the Wisconsin, all the different standards, but the Wisconsin ones, they align.
All right. Thank you. I can cross off all of my slides and let someone else have the floor.
Go ahead, Dr. Herzog.
Thank you, Ms. Salaji. I was anticipating that you would ask very relevant questions related to instruction and you did, so thank you. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Davis for inviting CISA 6 to be a participant in, in audit of our, our reading literacy curriculum. I believe this took place after the education committee meeting of November and there were some questions raised at that meeting. And it, I appreciate Dr. Davis's forward thinking on that. I'd also like to know, well, I have several questions as Ms. Salaji did, but on a, on a different tack. How long have, has the district implemented Fontis and Pennell? We've heard a lot of.
Well, we had the Fontis and Pennell phonics unit.
Okay.
And that's the one that wasn't being utilized. So.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't know of any Fontis. Like we're, we just now adopted some things, but we haven't had that in place except for the old phonics unit that people were not utilizing.
Okay. Okay.
So now we do use the, um, we have the supplementary materials that we're going to align with our core of that interactive read aloud book collection. Um, so we have those that, that was a missing piece for us. And then to give more clarity to teacher language in, within our units of study, that was a missing piece and some assessment, the mini lessons, you know, we're doing that alignment of the Fountas and Pennell. It's a mini lesson teacher book to just, um, to, to, to help support teacher language with anchor charts and different things for, for implementing the units of study. So it's a, it's a teacher support, but yeah, but otherwise we don't have any Fountas and Pennell materials.
Okay.
A little bit we've been in classrooms, the interactive read alouds have been celebrated greatly from kids and teachers as we've been making our rounds in the schools. So that's been a, a celebration, so.
Okay. On slide nine, there was reference to the newly purchased interactive read aloud book collection, which you've identified as, um, Fountas and Pennell, correct?
Yes.
No, not that one.
Uh, it's the next one, I think.
Okay.
Oh, no, you were. Actually, it's two are.
I was on the right one?
It's keep on. It's after phonics.
Oh, thank you.
The interactive read aloud.
There it is. Thank you. Okay. And then in slide 12.
I think it's just the next one.
Okay, yes.
Slide 12, you referenced, um, I'm sorry, slide 11. Interactive read aloud was recently purchased. It's aligned with Fountas and Pennell.
Oh, so you want to go back to the nine. Yes, go, so go back to nine.
That was the first reference, maybe the first reference I was aware of on the interactive read aloud. And then in slide 11, you noted, um, that it was recently purchased. It aligns with Fountas and Pennell. My question on that is, but it's not aligned with the district units of study. Is this being implemented, these interactive read aloud materials?
Yeah, so that the district guide format, so I, I'll let you speak, speak to that first bullet, aligned with that format, like the, it's just the, it's the verbiage of the.
Oh. So that, are you, are you referencing the first bullet item there under the celebration?
Yes.
Okay. So the district curriculum guide.
Right.
Talks about interactive read aloud irregardless of a, a product, just the process or activity or routine of an interactive read aloud. And the way that they, that the document outlines, uh, an interactive read aloud activity matches the way that it is presented in this resource. So with the re, I wish I had one with me. With, with the book, you get a teacher card.
Okay.
You know, so it's like, it's literally a card that folds out and it's four pages. And it tells the teachers on the front, it aligns to standards, it tells them what reading behaviors you could work on in this interactive read aloud. And then throughout the card, um, it outlines, um, it tells the teacher actually what to do. Now, it's a, it's a recommended lesson. You can change it as the teacher, like you can with pretty much anything, right? Teacher discretion, but it'll tell you, um, say this to introduce the book. Stop here and think aloud and show students this. And you might want to say it like this. A couple more pages. Stop here, ask the, ask the kids this and engage in conversation. Bring them back together and do that. So it'll like step by step. That's why it did score well because it's very explicit with what, um, what it helps the teacher know what to do and why to do it.
Okay. I, I don't think I asked my question very well.
Yeah. So I think was your question, I'm going to clarify, was it, is it now being implemented?
Yes.
Okay. So I, yeah, so that's a really, so that, thank you.
That I can't answer.
Yeah. So what I would say, it took me a while to, to put it all.
I'm sorry, I didn't clarify that.
Um, so what I would say is that, that the materials came November, December-ish. Um, and what we've asked teachers to do is take a look, explore, use them, you know, you're, you're doing interactive read aloud, that's part of, of your, the curriculum to do one, utilize this and explore and see what you think. So, so it's kind of been this, this exploring. Um, here's where it's been amazing is it a few different ways. Um, with our, our literacy coaches who have done student-centered coaching and been able to, to look at a unit of study and what, what do we want our students to learn within it? Our coaches have been able to utilize that. That's been really effective of how are we going to utilize, well, how, let's look through this and, and together, how will we plan and how does it fit in there? So that's been a really wonderful professional development for, embedded. And, um, I know another school that during, um, February, um, for Black History Month, they went, um, the school looked through all the, the different IRA collection to find books that across the school, they all made sure they did interactive read alouds with, with a Black History theme, by an author, the topic. Um, so that was a school-wide way of doing it. So what, with the alignment that we want to do with the interactive read aloud, with our homegrown, we want to make it so that those mentor texts are seamless within that there, so that, that it's built in for the core. And at this time, I think we're poised to do that because I think the teachers have enjoyed it, feel supported by it. Um, and so when they see that it's not one more thing, it's, it's, oh, this all, this all goes together. Um, we did go to one classroom where the, that, where the teacher invited us in because we happened to be at the school on a literacy visit, where the teacher invited us in because the students were loving the book so much and were doing so much thinking and, um, and visual note-taking with it, that they wanted to let us know. It was a beautiful thing. Um, so yes, so that I think is a way to show that, that not only teachers are enjoying it, but the students are enjoying it too.
The students in that classroom thought the books were profound.
That's the word I was looking for. Yes.
I remember hearing that. I have about four more questions, so I'll try to move these along. Mr. Nehans had given us an update on the ESSR II funds on March 9th, so two weeks ago. And he noted in that report that the district had purchased, um, the IRA kits for the elementary through those ESSR funds. Are these the kits we're referring to here in these slides?
Yes.
Okay. Um, are those considered, are those materials considered supplemental or are they considered in, uh, basic instructional materials?
Supplemental.
Supplemental. Okay. Thank you. And then in slide 12, I'm almost done. Slide 12, you note on the current practice, and I really like the, what you have there in terms of the essential standards, assessments to inform the student-centered nature of the, um, of what's going on in the classroom and the strong implementation of phonics, because I, I really do believe, based on what I've seen and read, that that's, that's critical. What I want to focus on here right now is the district plan for students with dyslexia and other related conditions. What, what is meant by other related conditions?
Um, so I would, really it's other related is if our students are striving and they're not reading to learn and keeping up with this, with students, it's, we can't always, we can't do it, always see neurologically what's going on or what that, what that might be. So we do diagnostic tests and we look to see, so really what we're talking about is any, any students who are not following that path of literacy on tar, on time and on, on target, then, then we need to do some more work to see how do we intervene early with them.
Okay. I was, I was just confused by that phrase because I know we had looked as a board at some testing results, uh, was presented as line graphs and it showed us, uh, performance of students of color, um, special ed, uh, students with special needs. Also showed us EL learners, students on free and reduced lunch. I didn't know if dyslexia was referring to all of those or it was, or if it was referring to something else. So I just wanted clarification on that.
Can I just add that phrase, other dyslexia and other related conditions actually comes from DPI?
Okay.
It is, um, it's probably on your website.
It's on our website.
It is, um, it is their handbook, guidebook on dyslexia and it's actually named dyslexia and other related conditions. And it speaks about the fact that dyslexia is difficult to completely diagnose and there might be more people that have it than we really realize. And that really it's about really good core instruction, particularly in the phonemic awareness area. Um, and that's really good for all readers is sort of the point of that document. But it's, it's a very thorough document that gives multiple examples, um, and it's out there for the public and is mandated to be linked on everybody's website. That was mandated like in December.
All right. Thank you. In the interest of time, I'll stop.
Mr. Collins, did you have questions, Mr. Wright, after this?
Well, we're going to get more of the presentation, so.
All right. So, Mr. Collins?
I think my stuff might be more pertinent later.
So, that's a good point. So we're going to go into the action plan in a little bit and talk about what the next steps are. Right? So I guess before we get to that point, um, you referenced, we've talked about the November education committee meeting and, um, some of this I'll say just to all of us because, you know, not all of us are at the education committee meetings and what we've gone through. But it was eye-opening and, and maybe isn't even a strong enough word for the four of us that were there, board members that were there and, um, where we've come from that point to now, the amount of information that I have learned about where we were in the past and as to why we are here right now and where we are going. And I think it's important to acknowledge that we have had some misses in the past. And Dr. Davis, you've used a good phrase lately that is grace for the past and accountability for the future. And I think that's really important, but it, it does come with the public as well. As we've heard tonight, there's a lot of frustration as to where we've been and trying to see where we're going with it. It unfortunately takes time. It's not something that we're going to have answers tonight or in two weeks or in six months. And so it's making sure that what we get to next, the action plan, is going to address as much of that as possible. Um, I have two kids that have gone through this school district, including myself. One is in fourth grade right now and one is in seventh. They've both struggled. And so for me, and, and they have support at home. And so part of what we've talked about is, is the equity journey as well and, and representation is, there's a lot of people who are in the same boat that don't have the support at home and are in a lot of different circumstances. So for a lot of this, I think through that lens of what are we doing to help everybody? And I think Ms. Wyman talked about that from the beginning of what, not only the people who are struggling, but the people who are succeeding and, and how are we going to help everybody? The dyslexia piece has, has come up a lot and it's, as we go through the action plan, I was looking through because when we did it at the education committee meeting, we didn't have certain things spelled out and I wanted to make sure that we spelled out dyslexia, um, to make sure where we are attacking those items as best as we can. And so as we go through this action plan, I'm going to look at it through a different lens and I appreciate the speakers tonight, but I'm going to be looking at it from, would this have helped Leila? You know, and using it for a lens of what could this be? And, and what can we do to make sure that the kids don't go through that same, you know, situation? So, um, I have a unique perspective in that my wife is also a substitute teacher. And so when I hear her going into the schools, the interactive read aloud has gotten high marks this year. And she said it, for a substitute coming in, it's easier to be able to jump in and help because it's set up more for her to succeed. I spent some of March and even before that, going into some of the schools, I'd like to kind of see what people are going through. And when we sit around the, the boardroom, being able to understand each school is different and, and I want to be able to have that. Well, it's been really good lately because I've gotten feedback from principals as to what they have thought. And from my, from what I've heard from not all of them, but some, I should say, I haven't been in all of the schools, but the ones I have, have given positive remarks for where things have gone this year. And they have been happy to see a little bit of growth and a little bit of, of movement on this that for, for a lot of it, for myself, for everybody I'm sure sitting on this table, not as much as we'd like, but it's, it's positive. And so, you know, we went through the last committee meeting and, and just looking at that. And I appreciate, Ms. Solaji, you, coming at it from a teacher's perspective and the questions you ask is really what started my mind in November as to how are we going to get where we want to be. But the questions you were asking were to be, sounded like incredible. You know, you're looking at it.
Thanks.
From somebody who's done it.
I remember you being like, oh, like I got to pay attention.
I, yes. And in some sense, it's like, I appreciate what Dr. Herzog did, like let, let, let's go first because the questions you probably had were incredible because you're looking at it and thinking about it differently than we are. And then Dr. Herzog, having been through this as long as you have, you know, here, hearing where we've come from and where we're going and, and listening to this, because you've listened to this more than, than any of us, you know, when it comes to different paths and different plans. So, um, sorry, I had some notes. I just want to make sure I didn't skip anything. I think one of the things that I've, I've heard as well was as we go through this action plan, not only giving the teachers the opportunity to succeed, but also understanding that a lot of them are coming in with a lot of frustrations and baggage from the past and giving them the opportunity to understand where we're going. Because a lot of times, some of them have felt not listened to, not, because they're the ones in the rooms, right? Especially some of the middle school teachers who are seeing where they've come from and not being prepared, that there's a lot of animosity, maybe, maybe isn't the right word, but there's a lot of frustration. And so I want to make sure that we give your word again, but grace to, to where we're coming from and knowing that we do have a long way to go with it. And, um, we will find out at the, you know, in time. And that's hard because we're putting a lot of student opportunities, hoping that we get to where we're going to be. But I do appreciate the fact that we have a superintendent who is asking to be held accountable. And I think that makes me as a parent in the district of kids going through this feel a lot better. When you ask for that and say, this is on me, you know, we are going to do it. So as we go into the action plan and see some of this stuff of where we're going, I think it's, um, I didn't really ask you guys any questions. It's more of kind of recapping some of my thoughts and things I've experienced, but, um, you know, I'm excited to see as we, I've been through this already, but see where we go next and some of the questions that we have, you know, going forward. So, thanks.
I guess I just have a couple of things. Um, I mean, obviously this is, in my opinion, the most important thing that we can do here as a board is get this right. Obviously, it's a hard thing to do with a lot of moving mechanisms and parts. And we understand that. And, you know, personally, as a board member, you know, our job is to make sure that we're giving the tools and providing the right oversight and that we're all in. And I know, you know, three, four years from now, people in the district will look and they'll look at our actions and they'll look at, you know, how we performed. And I, I'm not a reading literacy expert. I know that when I found, or my parents found the right reading literacy expert for me when I was a child, that was a tremendous thing. You know, so I know how important it is to have those tools in place for children to develop. And from an equity standpoint in the district, this is one of the greatest gifts, you know, we can give as well. And from an accountability standpoint, ye- yes, the community should hold us, board members, accountable for how we treat this issue. And then we should in turn hold the superintendent accountable. And, but we should all be in the same ship together and we should all be all in on this. And that's why I'm excited to hear the action plan and those, those are my comments for now, I guess.
Go ahead. Anything, anything else to respond?
Okay. So our next steps is to take a look at our action plan and Diana had left us with the big pieces that we need to be sure to cover. And that is focus on foundational skills by leveraging the strongest curriculum resource, engage in core reading curriculum review process with teacher leadership teams because we know how critical that is, and then use the interactive read aloud current resource to implement across K5 classrooms. So we are going to move into. So we are going to move into the action plan. Okay. And so we're going to chunk it by the different pieces. But the very first one was to focus on foundational skills by leveraging the strongest curriculum resource.
Can you make it just a little bit bigger?
Sure.
Like expand the, maybe expand the whole window. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And so the very first action step that we are taking with Diana is partaking in the Early Literacy Academy. That's going to take place this summer over five days with all of our elementary leaders. And again, the training is really going to be critical as to hone all of our skills that we need and based on the six shifts. And we did add, you know, where this will be helpful is of course with the phonemic awareness and with the phonics training that we know that we need for all of our students, including our students with dyslexia. The other piece that we will be doing then is in conjunction with that, I should say, is the professional learning focus for our K-2 teachers throughout the year. Again, they are going to be focused on phonemic awareness and some of the phonics pieces. And we have that laid out already in the plan and I'm really excited about where we can go with that. We have the CISA 6 partnership in that Diana will continue some coaching and support and monitoring with our coaches as part of the academy piece. The other piece, I'm going to kind of come down because it kind of all goes together, I think it does, is Diana's going to be doing a, another audit. And this is the one that Diana had shared early is really critical because it's one thing to say we do this on paper. It's another thing to say, what does it look like in practice in classrooms? And so Diana will be doing outside audit across all K-2 in the areas of phonics instruction to determine the fidelity in our classrooms. So that will be really interesting and she'll be doing that in October and March timeframe. So we'll kind of see before and after. I mean, we'll be doing some PD before that. But hopefully by the end, we're going to see some really great pieces there.
I'm sorry, I was looking for this in our packet.
Yep.
I've got a hard copy.
Okay, thank you. Oh, there it is. Okay, thank you.
Diana.
Okay. And then the professional learning that we'll be doing for grades three, five. This really did come from when we took a look at iReady, we can see some areas that we need growth in. And it's shouting, we need help with vocabulary and word work and targeting reading foundation and language essential standards. So that is going to be the target for next year for three, five. And then along with that, we will also be doing, conducting our own audit in that word work and vocabulary instructional practices across the district.
So I had, yeah, so I had, Kim was doing the professional learning part of that. You can see that's key. Everything we know is, we can have great resources. They'll never be perfect, but it all, it's all about the teacher and how that teacher can utilize those resources and other, and that knowledge to ensure that all students' needs are met and that teacher can differentiate. We want to give them as much support and training as we can because it is such a complex job. So those are the professional pieces. The other pieces that came that are part of that focusing and leveraging on that foundation and leveraging our units of phonics curriculum is we want to already this spring through June to explore decodable books to add to our bookrooms. So that that is that connected, that piece of if our students are learning about these important phonics rules, we need them to have texts that they can, can practice that. We also want to give teachers though, that also support with how can they create their own texts? Really texts that can also help students and be tied to students' names and things that they know with utilizing. So we want to give them that ability and a knowledge of how to do that. But we're going to be using the evaluation tools to kind of show how and when. And it's, and so having the books is one thing, utilizing them well will come through our professional development and our student-centered coaching. We believe that's really where, where we can, we can make sure they're embedded strongly. So just want to make sure, so we've got the professional learning. The other piece that was a recommendation and is to have a guaranteed and viable curriculum for, for our shared reading connected text where we can ensure that again, students are practicing on materials that are just at that level, that the text is shared by students. So we want to ensure access for that. So we want to go through a process where we can find materials that align for that and have that guaranteed for all of our teachers. And we want to embed that in the professional development as well, how to utilize those materials. And the more that teachers understand the purpose, the more they'll know how to utilize that responsibly with their students. We also want to make sure that there are clear expectations for interactive writing and the connection to the units of study of phonics. That is such another piece where students learn, go from the, I'm learning about this to I am doing this with a more knowledgeable other, which is their teacher. So being able to help our teachers understand what the expectations for this and how to relate it to what they're doing with phonics. So that teachers are looking for change over time with their students and their writing and what they're thinking about and what they're calling attention to as they, they form a writing piece together will be something that we're going to work through in guided collaboration next year. And it's really something that we'll have through their job embedded professional development as well. So those, that really, all of those action pieces fall under what Diana gave us for is how will you focus on? That's a recommendation, how will you focus? So we have many, many actions under that one. Another recommendation that was given is because of the strength of the interactive read aloud book collection that was purchased is how do we utilize that and ensure that our teachers better understand that purpose of the interactive read aloud? How it aligns and the structures of it? So we, we just want to ensure that through our professional development, our coaching, everything we do, how is that, how can, how can teachers go beyond, oh, yes, it's aligned here in the curriculum. But what does it mean to do it strongly? And how do I assess how students are doing and what am I looking for over time? And how does that relate to the essential standards that we have, especially our speaking and listening ones? Those are key that we can, so how, so really helping our teachers make that connection and seeing how that material can help support them. And then finally, recommendation was to engage in that core, our homemade units of study to really look at a review process with a teacher leadership team so that we can take a look based on what we know, how, to move from the marks that we already have for our current units of study, how we're making strides with the work that has been done. How do we, how do we move our current homegrown units of study to be more coherent and have assessment and do that alignment? So we have a, we have a kind of a three-step process that we are working through right now. The literacy coaches through the spring are taking, they're working in grade level groups and they are, they are doing the alignment that we started at the beginning of the year of aligning the mini lessons so that teacher clarity to what we already have there. They are aligning the interactive read alouds and the units of phonics, study of phonics. And looking at that alignment and also prioritizing the, embedding, you know, the standards to ensure that we are prioritizing the essential standards. They will do an analysis at the grade level and across the grade levels before school lets out. We've got Friday afternoon meetings that we do this work. They, they will do analysis of what are the gaps that are still there that, that we really need teacher input on that? And where are, what, and what, taking a look at what might need to shift in scope and sequence? And then we're going to bring in teacher leaders from across the district, across the schools at each of the grade levels to take a look at that, do some revision based on that analysis so that we can, we can have the seamlessness across the grades. But also get that input of what teachers have, the exploration that they've done with the supplementary materials, the work that they've already done of working through the units of study and what works and what doesn't and bringing them in. And what's interesting when you talk about grace and teachers like, like working through some frustrations, I think they're getting to that point. I think they're coming to the trusting. I just had, I mean, this truly just happened at the gym this week where I had a kindergarten teacher who said, if you're going to do any work on the units of study, well, can I be a part of it? So I think there is this, this, this want of, you know, when I see things are shifting a bit and our voices are being heard and how can I help out on that? So I thought that there you go, work out and get somebody on a task force. So I think that, yeah, that's all of our actions.
Can I, one comment. This is absolutely amazing. I hope that there is a review process, a continual review process because we've already heard about the phonics program from years ago that no one used it, so we didn't do it. It would be a shame after being, looks like on the right track with all these things in place for pieces just to get dropped along the way. And I know if we're accountable, setting the goals for Brian, he's accountable, you're accountable to him. Everyone should be accountable. It would really be a shame after all of this for it not to go in the right direction because as Chris said, we owe this to all of our children in this district and it's a long time coming. Grace all around, but it's a long time coming.
Can I just address that for a second? If you're engaging in that audit of classroom practices around phonics, what you'll get is at the end of that, as part of the report, you'll get a district scorecard which will have every indicator that we've agreed to look for around good phonics instruction. And it'll be organized in celebrations, quick wins and deep study, sort of. And it sets you up to be able to choose the ones you want to continue monitoring and look for data to change with an internal process that you could then, you know, getting into classrooms like you're doing, but with those indicators in mind and collecting actual evidence throughout the year, three times, two times, one time, whatever the district decides. But that will set you up for that phonics piece.
And that's fantastic. And I hope along with this, we're able to share stories, positive stories with our community, success stories that we don't have to wait till the end of the year, that we can say we've put this into place. This is what we're seeing. We need to let our community know.
I have a question.
I'm going to take a little devil's advocate approach here in a very, very supportive and grateful way. I was the education chair when Molly and parents started coming to talk to us five years ago. And it's been five years and we've come a long way in the sense that at the time, five years ago, we would not even address the word dyslexia in our curriculum. So I appreciate how far that we've come in talking about dyslexia and making strides. But my question and I guess my main concern moving forward is I want these targets to be set. I want our goals to be set. I appreciate that Dr. Davis is taking accountability. But it has been five years that we have been talking about this issue and talking about changing our curriculum. And I know that we were interrupted by a pandemic and I agree with Grace and everything. But I'm, I'm coming from a place of accountability and I want to see results from this effort in the next year. I know that's a huge ask and I know that, you know, I'm sounding very, possibly a little bit aggressive with my comments and I don't mean to be that, but it's time for us to really move the needle on this and see some numbers and set some goals. So my question is to Dr. Davis, I guess, is when are we going to be setting our targets and goals?
Yeah. So I think what I heard tonight was that would be an opportunity that we'd take up not only in the education committee, but also in the policy committee. I think part of that will be looking at our goals and numbers. I think you have to, some of that is taking a statistical look. You know, what makes sense for us to be able to make growth? We'd all like to be at 100%. There's not a district in the country that's 100%, right? And so we need to take a really methodical look at statistically what's, what's natural progression as we're, as we're moving forward. We know we can't do this all in one year. It's taken a long time for us to be able to get here. But we should be able to statistically predict if these things are happening, what should we be seeing as our results? So I would anticipate through both of that committee work, once we're completed with that, be able to come back to the full board, to the community to present some targets and goals that we can set up that statistically would make sense and allow, you know, for a pathway which was laid out here as part of our, part of our progress.
Yes. And I know that you already are including this group of parents that have been very helpful in their advocacy. And I think that getting them involved and keeping them involved is very important as well because they have been on a long journey as well. And I value and respect the input that they've given to this board and to you as well. And I know that you do as well.
Yeah.
I can say that looking at our upcoming agenda items for the April meeting, there's only potentially two things on there. I don't know if we got a Neola dump of, you know, the small changes. But I can call Sherry tomorrow and ask that we put the policy on reading and look at those accountability measures in the next week, right? It's April 6th. It's like a week.
Yeah. We,
Where's life, Bill?
We can start that process. We may, we may need a little time to be able to get some expertise and our resources to be able to get that set. So, yeah. But it's, I guess to the point of this is an urgent matter, right? Like this isn't anything that we're looking to just sit on and like we are moving forward with urgency.
Thank you, Mr. Pechal. I'd like to refer to the document Diana that you produced called K-5 Reading Resource Review Results. There are more than 39 pages and lots of appendices. I want to refer to the last one, which is recommendation. It's appendix I, I believe. Appendix I. I was looking at that before coming to the meeting tonight and I, and I, I support everything that the other board members have said in terms of grace. And we're in a different time. There's been an interruption in student learning because of COVID. We all know those things. So, so what are the next steps? I really like this section because it gives a three-year timeline. Change theory would suggest you can make changes within three years and you ought to be able to see results. I'm about results. And when I, it's been multiple times that I've heard of students struggling. Not only the courageous young lady who spoke to the board tonight, but other students. And I sit here and I think, if that were my child or if I had a child struggling like that, would that be good enough for my child? And I would say, no, it's not. So why is it, why is it okay then for these students now struggling? We have to figure this out. We, we need a sense of urgency on this. I'm not saying teachers have not worked hard. I've not said that, and I don't believe that central office personnel and administrators, building administrators have worked hard, but we're not, we've not seen the results. And we're not alone.
True.
I had a, I had a statistics professor some years ago who said, all numbers are interesting. Well, in this case, the numbers in our district in terms of student learning and growth in the area of literacy are, are interesting to me. But so are the statewide results and they're not good. And I've had conversations with Ted Nitsky about this. I think it's part of the reason why there is a early literacy academy at CISA 6 to begin to address some of those things. And when I've talked with a state senator who said, we chose not to give districts more money this year because we're not seeing results. That's to me, very, very telling. We're being looked at and we need to do a better job. And I believe we have the human resources to do that. But I'm expecting that within three years, we're going to see some closing of the gap on those opportunity gaps or the, the learning gaps in terms of our students of color, our EL students, our students on free and reduced lunch. We have got to get this right. I've been on this board for eight years. We've been talking about improving our reading skills for eight years and our student performance and it's, we've got to do it now. Now is the time. If not now, when? And if not this board, then who? who? So we've got to move forward. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. There's a lot more work to be done. And I think the board will look forward to future reports saying what's been implemented, how are things going, and so on. But I also think we owe parents an explanation, because we've heard it again tonight, about some resources that seemingly do not have good results in other states and aren't being advocated or recommended in other states. And they've asked the questions, but I've never really heard answers to those. So I hope that we can do some follow-up with the individuals who spoke tonight and questioned some of those resources. They didn't mention Lucy Cawkins, but that might be another one that should be on that list. I know we've implemented that for more than 10 years, because I know when Tammy Kilbasa was principal at Oaklawn School, and I think she, I know she was there prior to 2011. So I know those materials have been, and it's not just about the materials, but it's how they're implemented. And as some of you, someone pointed out tonight, we've had phonics materials, but they haven't been implemented. There's an accountability piece there when adoptions are made on curriculum. I know a little about that, that there needs to be implementation at the classroom level, at the building level. And there's an accountability piece, not only with Dr. Davis, but also with our principals and our teachers. So, but I would like to see a follow-up to the public forum tonight and answers provided to those individuals who ask those questions, and I think they deserve answers. Thank you.
Mr. Cords?
I appreciate the comments, and I don't think anyone's being too aggressive in what we're saying, because I think that the feedback that we've gotten as a parent, as a member of this community, is that, you know, is that we haven't been good enough. And I love the idea of being on this board to benefit the community. And Mr. Wright, you had said, like, the greatest gift we can give is the ability for reading, right? Like, we want to change the world. We want to change our community. We want to change everything. It's about that ability. And so I am not an expert on the different curriculums that we can use. That is not my specialty. I defer in that to other people. And to be fair, I'm not, I don't care which ones we use. I care that the results are there. And if it's not the right one, then I trust that we move on, that we find something else. At the end of this, I, I guess I would say, what do we, what do you need from us? Because what I've heard from the buildings, that there are not enough literacy coach time to prepare. There's not enough literacy coaches, and you've mentioned that in the past, about opportunities. And this involves money. It involves, you know, a, an investment. And listening to what Dr. Herzog said about not giving money because we're not good enough, I philosophically find myself to be different than that, in that I want to invest in people, because I feel like if we invest in people, we invest in the resources. If we're doing it right, we should see results. And so if we want to see results, it's not going to come by cutting the budget and hoping we get better. It's going to be investing, because it's proven, the more people we put in the classrooms with our children, the more people, the more qualified staff, the more staff with higher educations, which we've talked about at committee meetings, and making sure that we're, you know, having equity in our staff all throughout the district, it involves money. And so what can we do to invest? And that's along with accountability at the next education, or not the next one, but at the education and policy and governance meetings, it's coming back to us and giving us a plan of, this is what we want to do with this. This has all been great, but what do we do with it now, is what I'd like to see. And I'm challenging, you know, you all to find out what you need from us to make this happen.
Yeah, and that'll be something that'll come out in our entire staffing plan, as we look at that into the future. Again, the primary role right now is to be able to get those accountability measures set, and make sure that we're all talking about the same language. We have a clear expectation from this board down to, you know, all of our staff members. Everybody is rolling in the same direction. We all understand what those targets are, so we can celebrate together, we can reflect together, we can improve together. You know, that'll all be part of our process. But first things first is that foundation. And then we'll bring you the, you know, staffing requests and needs that we'd have to be able to get there.
Perfect.
I just want to add one thing, you know, you can, you can look at things from a number of different lenses, right? So, but let's look at this from the lens of this, what a wonderful opportunity this is, you know? What a wonderful opportunity we have to all work really hard to do what we can together to, you know, to hopefully get this right. So we can't, can't not look at it from that lens as well. I mean, those other pieces are going to be there, you know? And obviously, our desire to help as many kids in the district become proficient at reading is very strong, you know, amongst all of us, amongst anyone in the community. I mean, and if any of us could flip a light switch and make it happen tomorrow, we would, right? So just, just know that, you know, there, we're with staff and teachers, and, you know, we're with everyone to make this actually work. You know what I mean? It'd be successful, because at the end of the day, that's what matters. So, thank you, guys.
Go ahead.
I have a question that I forgot. And I have comments, too. But the DRA was not listed on that assessment list. Is that something we're going to continue to use, or are we stepping away from that?
We know that that is something that varies, so that's why we've decided to go with I-Ready. Like, DRA is something that we use internally, and we'll probably continue to use it because it gives us a different gauge, but it's not the one that the board is looking for, nor the community, because I don't think people really even understand, like, what.
Yes, as a parent, DRA is not my favorite.
It confuses when you look at that compared to other pieces. It's like, well, why? So, yeah, we decided we're just going to stick with pieces that will really tell the story and help us also know I-Ready having that correlation to the oral exam, so that people can see, so.
Perfect. Thank you. I also just wanted to say, you'd mentioned the letters training, and I would love, I mean, we don't need a whole board meeting on it, but I would love to hear more about that, about the other teachers that will take it, and if that's something that we can further expand in the district, because that was something I was very excited about for that literacy task force.
What I can, what I can say, just now, but of course, any, anytime you can talk. But I know that going through all of it, I can tell you that the six shifts in the book, they take, they take that letter training and make it very doable, and what does this mean for, you know, for in-class, and how do I use this in my instruction? So really, the Early Literacy Academy, having gone through the letters training, will give teachers that really rich foundational pieces, that they can make those shifts very quickly, and we can ensure that some of those pieces that we know have to be there every day are there every day, and what the purpose is for that, so.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All of this conversation makes me think of our strategic plan, our vision, is that we'll be leaders in education through innovation. And I know that I, you know, have to stay at the 300,000 level, is that what we talk about?
At least 30,000.
30 is that, I'm not a math person, I'm a literacy person, so 30, okay. I don't know how high airplanes go. But I know that, you know, I need to stay at this level of focusing on the strategic plan. But I just want you to know that as we move forward with this over the next three years, I do hope to see a lot of innovation, if that means moving to different curriculums, if that means investing in more trainings like the letters training, or whatever sort of innovation that means for our district, that I want you to know that I am supportive of that. I know that's the level that I'm supposed to be at. I also, and, oh, right after I say I'm going to stay at a high level, I'm going to just put a pitch out there for the interactive read aloud, being continued at the middle school and high school levels as we keep going. Having taught at those levels, you know, I'm not an expert at the elementary level, and to kind of help the public and maybe even people at the table understand exactly what an interactive read aloud is. It's when a classroom teacher takes a text that all the students have access to, viewing and reading along as the teacher reads it aloud, and it's also above grade level. So the content's above grade level, the words, the language is above grade level. So it's a way to bring every student, the student who, you know, Ms. Wyman was speaking up for, that might already be ahead, the students who might be behind, and just bringing them all together with one text and one shared reading experience. And in my experience, where I really tracked the data, the units that I did as a teacher, that were founded in interactive read alouts during the classroom time, are absolutely where I saw the most growth. And that was at the eighth, ninth, 10th grade level. That wasn't just at this elementary level. So I just want to put a pitch that as we move this up grade levels to continue encouraging that. And as a teacher, those were my favorite units and experiences, too.
Absolutely.
And, shoot, I should have ended on that, because now I'm going to go to, but it was mentioned about the measure of the state not giving funding because they're not seeing results. And to me, that just is so disheartening, because that's a punitive approach to a problem, which is exactly what No Child Left Behind did. And the first school I taught at, where I wasn't able to track the data as well and have as many positive experiences, did not show growth, and so punitively, it was restructured and shut down. And I know that that process did not see growth. It didn't, like, being punitive to the school did not somehow magically get the, in DC, it's the city council, the results that they wanted. So I just think it's really unfortunate, and again, maybe something to put in legislators' ears, that being punitive about failing to see results will not get them the results that they are hoping to have. So that was just my final note that I took during all this conversation.
On that note, I'd like to invite you to Legislative Committee meeting tomorrow.
I have class at nine, but, yeah, the Legislative Committee can do a lot of powerful work.
So I have some comments. Not a lot. I've been quiet.
Yeah, you have been quiet.
So, and it really just comes down to kind of creating that example of how we, as a board, have been trying to empower district leaders, staff, to come to us, tell us about the tools that excite, you excite our students and create growth and development within our students. And I just want to make that example, is that we've been really big on improving our communication as a district. And so we asked Katie to come to us with a plan, and to give us something that we can get behind in order to be able to move forward, and to start telling our story. And this is part of telling our story. Beth, Ms. Wyman, you brought up success stories. I work in a world that utilizes United Way. And so United Way is all about success stories. I'm about telling our stories. And so if there's ways that we can implement our success stories, not in three years, and tell our success stories in six months in a regular interval, it's going to empower you, as you come to us, about telling us what you need, how, what you're using, whether it's working or not, and how we can pivot to support the growth of students, which then turns into pivoting to supporting the growth of our teachers and our district administrators about being behind a curriculum that uplifts kids and their families' lives. So, to me, it's making sure that we are open enough as a board, and letting you know that if something's not working on your end, tell us. Tell Dr. Davis that, so that we can make, help you make those changes. I've been on the board, this is going into my sixth year, and I resonate with the challenges of the last five years of not being able to see some growth forward. And so I'm to the point where I want results, but I don't want you to be so scared of doing it right and perfect that you don't want to make the changes. So I encourage you to shift as appropriate in regards to the tools and resources that we're utilizing to uplift our children. So, and that's, that's really important. And I want to encourage you to engage and celebrate the results. What you've provided here is a framework. It's a framework that I don't think some of us that have been on the board for a while have felt that has been there. And so, and just like we know, and this is kind of my reiterations here, frameworks can be changed. It can be modified. We want to know where you're seeing growth, and where we can build a foundation for that continued growth. And we're here. We're, it was said earlier, someone, I think, I think Liz, you said it earlier, we're all in. And I still have a pin here that says we're all in.
Mr. Wright said that, too, tonight.
So, so I just think it's really important that we're your allies. We have the same thing set as a foundation as what you want, and that's to improve children's lives. And I think this gets us on a path to doing that. But I just want us to be comfortable in knowing that if something needs to change, let us know. We will be behind that. So, that's all I have. So, thank you. Thank you all for your time and your expertise. Parents, thank you for your advocacy as well. It's important. So we look forward to our next steps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. It's going on nine o'clock. Does anyone need a quick break, like a five-minute break? I do not, by the way.
I'm surprised those are students that want to stay.
Lay those media up and talk to me.
No, let's power it through.
All right. Everyone's good with going through? All right, sounds good. Let's do it. All right. Next, we are on the consent resolution agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Can I just, can I, I'd like, I'm not opposed to that, but I just want to read the italic statement that's there, because I want to be in the habit of doing that, because it tells the public a little bit about what we're doing. So, "For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item, or as discussed at a previous meeting, these will be acted upon in one vote without discussion." So there has been a motion to waive the reading of the consent agenda. I'm looking for a second. A motion by Wyman, a seconded by Herzog. Thank you for that. So please call the roll.
Peschall.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Currents.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right.
Do I need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
That's what we just did.
I moved to.
We waived the reading.
Waive the reading.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, I moved to approve the consent agenda.
She did move to approve it.
Oh.
That is what I heard.
Oh.
That's, I got rid of a whole step.
Okay.
Efficiency.
Okay.
So, all right.
We'll make sure.
I just want, yeah, I want to make sure. So what we just voted on was not waiving
the consent agenda. We were just voting on approving the amended agenda that we had come up with earlier by moving nine to individually considered items.
That's correct. Yes. That's what I voted on, when I said aye.
It's not a wave of the reading. It is consenting to.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Technically, I feel that we approved the new consent agenda at the approval of the agenda.
We did, we had a motion to do that.
So that was done at that point.
Yep.
So, now, just to backtrack, did you, I didn't, I'm sorry if I didn't hear you correctly, did you make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I did.
Yes, that is what I moved.
So we need to correct that, is that Wyman made a motion to correct, to approve the consent agenda.
Yes.
And it was seconded by?
Herzog.
By Herzog, yes. I misunderstood it, as a request to waive the reading. I misunderstood it, as a, as a request to waive the reading, so, my apologies.
No worries.
No worries.
Okay. So then, so in your opinion, did you take roll to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So then, we have approved the consent agenda, and we are moving on to individually considered resolutions. Thank everyone for their patience. All right. First one is...
Nine.
Number, well, I...
Nine was pulled.
Nine was pulled, yes.
I pulled nine, yeah.
So, that's fine. Okay. Number, resolution number nine, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve adult updates to the policy 0155.6. Energy Management Committee has filed with the Secretary of the Board of Education. Looking for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carnes, seconded by Carlin. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I pulled this item because, to my knowledge, I don't wanna say that this is the very, very first parent-led committee, but it is one of the first committees that I knew as a parent-led committee, and it was the Energy Committee, and it was founded in 2009 by Ellen Lair, who has spent many years dedicating service to our community, and she sent me, she saw in our meeting notes that we were merging the Energy Committee with the Facilities and Finance Committee, and she sent me a short note that I would like to read regarding the, that committee and the parent involvement, because I think it's worth noting their contribution to our community. So this was from Ellen, so. "In 2009, the Energy Committee started as a meeting and it became a movement. We started because we were facing looming budget cuts as a district in 2008. At the time, I was volunteering at Oakwood Environmental Charter School, and we were trying to become a DNR, green, and healthy school. I went to a board meeting and proposed that we combine the efforts of financial savings and environmental responsibility, and the Energy Committee idea was formed. Our initial goals were to create a committee that would represent each OASD school to share ideas and work collaboratively, to identify the group's largest controllable waste, including electricity, heat, and paper usage, to develop user-friendly, adoptable standards for controlling wasteful behaviors, and to educate building users and begin the process of recognizing energy savings. We had our first meeting in October of 2009. Each building set one representative, and we determined our big three waste items. From there, we decided to make simple and consistent behavioral changes that would encourage saving resources. It took several years and countless meetings to write our guiding document, the energy usage rules, and more time to get it adopted by the board. It also took a long time to become the, an official and the first community member-led board committee. We worked with three superintendents to validate our committee and our mission, and we created positive change. We worked collaboratively. Our district won awards and became an energy-saving standard for others to follow. And when we started, we had zero budget, we didn't even officially exist as a recognized committee, and we didn't have an official guiding document. I've been in every building and roof and every boiler room and have seen firsthand how hard our custodians and facilities personnel worked to make our buildings exist and function through numerous challenges. Did you know that we actually used to go to every building and every classroom to the end of every school year to make sure that they were shut down before summer break? To enhance, to entice several of our committee members to attend the early morning meetings, we would bring baked goods to sweeten the atmosphere. And on the sign-in sheet from our second meeting in 2009 was a familiar name, Dr. Barbara Herzog. Thanks for being there and supporting us from the very beginning. If indeed we are now about to be obsolete, we can say that we were so good at managing our mission that we actually put ourselves out of a job. That was something we never could have envisioned during our first meeting in 2009. Thank you to all the wonderful selfless volunteers and many hands that made our dream a reality." So, thank you for letting me read that. I thought it was very well done by Ellen. Thank you, Ellen, and her team.
Any other comments, discussion? No? Please take the roll.
Solaji.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Peschel.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
All right. Now, next up is resolution 11.
I move waiving the reading of resolution 11.
All right. I'm gonna just read the very, the very title of it. I'm not gonna, I would, I would, I would love that, so. So there's been a motion to waive the reading of resolution number 11. Looking for a second.
Second.
Aye. She needed it.
So, moved by Herzog, seconded by Carlin.
To waive the reading.
To waive the reading.
Yes, I got that.
Isn't it only one line?
Okay. So, what's that?
Isn't it only one line? Like, couldn't we have been...
No, it's the...
It's the, it's the whole.
Okay, I'm just reading right off of here.
Yeah, it's the whole thing.
No, no, no. You have to click on there and...
So, so just, just to bring some clarification to the public, I'm just going to read the, the title of the resolution, but not the whole document, and then I'm going to invite Mr. Nihans up to, to give a description of what we're, of what we're discussing and what we're voting on. So, so first, take a vote on the, please take a roll on the waiving of the reading.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Peschel.
Aye.
Solaji.
Aye.
Motion carries to waive the reading.
Okay. So, the, this is resolution number 11. It's a resolution awarding the sale of $42 million in general obligation promissory notes. So looking for a motion to move.
So moved, Tom.
Second.
Moved by Carnes, seconded by Wright. We are open for discussion. I'm gonna invite Mr. Nihans to lead us first, and then we'll be able to follow up with any questions after his, his discussion, his talk.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. The district issued promissory notes for a five-year term earlier today, and we have the results that we're gonna go over that is the resolution that you're gonna act on in just a minute. So the winning bid was from Huntington Securities. You can see we did get quite a bit of activity on this. They, they won with a 2.84 percentage rate, which is still pretty good for what we're doing. So this is just the, what, what the issue is. You can see our, our S&amp;P rating did stay at a double A minus, and we, we did get a really good report from the rating agent this time, and they're, they're really happy with where the district is going and where our finances are. So, pre-referendum, here's what we were projecting out. We projected out and told the community that there were gonna be three issues of bonds for, for the referendums. The projected interest rates, you can see, ranged from 3.5% up to 4%. We decided to take a different route than this as we got into, really looking at the detail of not only the projects, but what the interest rates were. So last year, we did do a $65 million issue. We wanted to capitalize on the crazy low interest rates at the time and try to take as much of that that we can, 'cause we are limited by state law with how long you can hold debt before you, that you have for a project. So we were kind of constrained. There is no way we were gonna be able to issue all 107 million for that interest rate because you only have a limited amount of time, so we wouldn't have enough time to get the elementary project done before you have to actually pay that out. So, we were limited, but 65 million was, we felt, our capacity. We got that 1.66 interest rate, the 2.84 on the 42 million we just did today. So here, you can see the comparisons from what we were projecting pre-referendum to what we have on the bottom. So in interest costs, we've saved taxpayers just under $38 million issuing the, the debt the way we structured this. So that, that's a, a huge plus for the community. Again, part of that was the interest rates, but it's also being, being able within our current tax levy situation to assume those 42 million on a five-year window payment back, and then setting us forward for an opportunity for Phase Two that we talked about at our last meeting with minimal impact on the taxpayers comparatively. Does anyone have any questions on that?
That's a great communication story.
Exactly.
Yes.
I like it.
Very good.
We're on it.
All in, right?
All in. All right. Any other comments, questions?
Good job.
No? See, none? Thank you. So, it's just, it's, it's unfortunate that it's, it's nine o'clock at night and the public's gonna read about it, you know, in the, in the newspaper, rather than hearing it, I'd ask from a, from a better time, so. So thank you for your work, we appreciate it, and we're gonna go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Since there is no other discussion, let's call the roll.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. We are on resolution number 12.
I move to waive the reading of resolution 12.
All right. Been moved to waive the reading?
Second.
Moved by Herzog, seconded by Wright. Please call the roll on the waiving of the reading.
Okay. Carlin?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, again, I'm just gonna read the title of the resolution. Resolution 12 reads, "Resolution Authorizing the Redemption of General Obligation School Building Bonds, Series 2012, dated June 15 of 2012." Looking for a motion for resolution number 12.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carlin, seconded by Solaji.
Wait.
Wait, did we do that? Oh, sorry. I got ahead of myself. We're open for discussion.
All right, when I said second, I'm like, no, I don't wanna hold on.
Mr. Nihans, would you like to come back up?
Sure.
It's getting late, I'm sorry.
I'm glad my face looks present. We queued in there.
This issue was just paying off some debt that we had existing that was callable, so we're able to, we're able to legally pay it off. We had levied for this in prior years, so it was already accounted for and somewhat planned, as far as that goes, it was just a timing situation of waiting for them to become callable. This is gonna save taxpayers just under $120,000 of interest with, with this prepayment as well.
Wonderful. Any questions?
I just had one. Was this related to a prior referendum?
Correct. It, it was part of the 2012 debt that was from Oaklawn.
That's what I thought.
So, it, it takes a, a certain amount of time before the debt's callable, where you can, and the callable just means where you can pay it off, or you could refinance it. We don't need to refinance it at this point, so it was better to get it off the books and, and get the interest savings.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for your work on this as well. I just wanna say thank you. I feel like it's such a good message to the taxpayers that we're being aggressive about paying off debt in timely manner, both the last resolution and this one.
We talked about communication on that, I mean, you know, opportunities to that, but like, on the website or whatever else, I just feel like the one thing that we've heard from the community is the story's not being told as much when, like, the next phase of the referendum comes up. Instead of trying to say what we did three years before, being able to tell it as it goes, like, we're saving all this money, we've done this, we're fiscally responsible.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's a really, really important message, so I hope you guys have a plan for that.
I mean, the reality of this, being so aggressive and coming up with this plan, is that it's gonna allow us to be extra aggressive in our, you know, in future facility-type deals, and keep the mill rate at a relatively pretty, you know, stable level, level. So, this is really, I don't think you underscore how big of work this is towards the future facilities needs in our district. It's a big, big deal.
All right. Please call the roll.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
As have it, resolution carries.
All right. And our final resolution, resolution 13, to reads, "Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve three different vendors, Marshfield Book and Stationery, Eman's Business Interior and Duette Resource Group totaling $1,769,432.52 for the furniture contracts for the Val Phillips Middle School, as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education."
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Herzog, seconded by Carnes. We are open for discussion. Does anyone need any follow-up from Mr. Nihans or Dr. Davis on this? Any questions? No? Okay. Then please call the roll.
Carnes?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Okay. Next, we are on a request for future agenda items, and we've had some conversation tonight from the public, as well as some conversation related to some policy work and everything, so I just wanna kind of go over those, not necessarily for future agenda items, but maybe policy or committee work and such, so. But first, I wanna come back to our, our public comments for non-agenda-related forum related to the, the Park and Ride Bus Act. So, they're specifically asking us to essentially forego our policy on that. To me, that's, if we're going to do that, I guess, what's your, what's your direction that you would give us on proceeding with, with any direction on that?
My recommendation would be to stay with the current statute and, and our, our direction from the DPI, and, you know, work with our, our, you know, Winnie County colleagues, knowing that we all care about kid safety, it's our number-one priority for us. I've talked with the superintendent in Winnie County, I know it's her number-one priority also, and the, you know, parents who are in that situation certainly, you know, chose from the DPI, and, you know, work with our, our, you know, Winnant County colleagues, knowing that we all care about kid safety. It's our number-one priority for us. I've talked with the superintendent in Winnant County. I know it's her number-one priority also. And the, you know, parents who are in that situation certainly, you know, chose to go to Winnant County and be able to work with their transportation department. I'm very confident that they can find, if, if it's not a, their current situation isn't amiable, I'm sure that they can work with Winnant County to be able to find, you know, an improved space.
So, let me, just let me ask that, because I, it may decide what direction we might go in. Is there a policy that decides how we handle that?
So, it would, it would be got, it would be our, it would be the direction from the state statute that would guide that.
So, there's nothing in our policy that guides that?
Correct.
It's the state DPI regulation?
Correct, yeah.
That governs transportation?
That's guidance, correct.
Okay. So, all right. So then, so that's, that's Dr. Davis's direction and suggestion. Is the board comfortable with that direction? Without? Okay. So, the next is, it sounds like we are moving forward in policy and governance and the education committee, looking at policy 20, 213101 in regards to the, the standards. So, and that will be on a future agenda of both committees within the next month or two.
Correct.
Okay. I think that was the last one. Was there one other? Was there anything else that anyone wanted to address for a future, either put to committee or for a future agenda?
I had suggested, excuse me, I had suggested that the individuals who spoke at open forum on agenda-related have someone reach out to them and answer the questions that they raised.
Correct. Yep, I wrote that down too as well. So, yep, so if you could direct the staff person to follow up with the families that came today related to dyslexia and literacy?
Yeah.
And the, related to the, the curriculums that they were talking about that states are not using.
Correct. Okay, yep. Specific to that, yes. We'll, we'll put together a response.
All right. Anything else? Okay? Yes?
We're going to hear a report from Katie at some point to vote additional help.
Yes. It's a, yes, it's going. That'll be, that'll be over the summer.
Perfect.
But she, yes, she is, she's on it.
Thank you.
All right. Any announcements?
Thank you. I understand that March is National Social Workers Month, and so I just want to give a shout-out to our outstanding social work crew and the excellent work they do each and every day to help our students and their families and our community. So, thank you, social workers.
Ms. Karin, I think at the beginning of the meeting, you indicated that.
Oh, yes. That seems like a million years ago.